of Education. I would like to welcome you to the May 12, 2021 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Board members and most staff are present in the boardroom. Some staff may be participating virtually. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:15 and 6:30. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to the guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized in communication about public comment for this meeting. Citizens must wear a mask while in the building and also when addressing the Board. I would also remind us to silence our cellphones and other devices around us and that the microphone may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia and second by Dr. Dorsey. Comments?
Ms. Herbert.
Ms. Sevigney.
I would like to suggest that we table item 8H. Is that me? No.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
That's fine.
We're going to be tabling that discussion until after the Commissioners have their work sessions regarding the budget, so I would like to make a motion
Okay.
that we table item 8H until a future meeting later in May.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Dr. Dorsey. Any other comments?
We need to pass that before we do a second amendment.
Yes, right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Any other comments? Mr. Kyler?
I'd like to have us move public participation to the next item between 1C and 1D.
Okay. That's your motion. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
And Dr. Dorsey. Any other comments?
And is that because we have some folks waiting and there's a lot of additional items going on after that? Okay.
All right. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I'm going to ask for the approval of the agenda with the two added motions.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia and second by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigney. Do we have any other comments? So for those watching, we are going to move citizen participation up to right after the approval of the agenda, and then we are going to table 8H. Any other comments? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, we will start with citizen participation.
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to the social distancing guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized in communications about public comments for this meeting. All citizens must wear a mask in the building and when addressing the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through mail or email. Citizen participation is not intended to be question and answer. However, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The Superintendent/Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15 and 6:30. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic, so all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. The public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting in lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in common.
Good evening, Board members. Superintendent Lockhart, and congratulations to all the outstanding teacher nominees. My name is Gary Foot. I teach at South Carroll High School. I'm getting ready to finish my 30th year, and tonight I'm going to come here to ask a very simple question. Why can't we have nice things? The answer, according to Heather McGee, author of The Sum of Us, has to do with the fact that we would rather do without than see people who are different actually enjoy benefits we could easily provide for everyone. So we go without health care, childcare, elder care. We shortchange our public schools. We don't bother to invest in infrastructure, and then we wonder what is wrong. We have a tendency to view the world as a zero-sum game, and if another group is enjoying benefits, it must be because our own group has somehow lost out. So we would rather perform the adult version of taking our toys and leaving the playground. And where does that leave us? In the middle of another investigation of possible racial slurs, and our response is, this won't be tolerated. Of course, the reality is, saying it is not nearly enough. I spent 13 years in public school, counting kindergarten, four years as an undergraduate, four more years in graduate school, several years and a variety of classes beyond that. Never once has anyone actually stated that diversity is a good thing. We have no lessons. We have no curriculum. We think that the school somehow desegregated in 1954, and the problem has now been solved. Did you know that racially diverse juries deliberate longer and reach fairer verdicts in the end? That racially diverse teams in business and industry solve problems more effectively and in the end more completely? That students in truly diverse schools have better learning outcomes and higher test scores? And if we really believe that cultural competency is required for 21st century success, then how can we possibly achieve that with the way our schools are presently configured? The portraits in this lobby here say far more about our system's commitment to diversity than any words ever will. Go ahead and take a look the next time you get a chance. What does what you see say about CCPS? And why do we track students? If diversity is a desired outcome, why do we continue to group students together who are alike in almost every way? If we don't think that hanging out exclusively with people who are exactly like us is not a desirable social model, then why do we organize our schools to accomplish exactly that? Diversity could be our superpower, but not if we don't completely change the way our community is organized. This problem goes way beyond anything that the local school board can address. We need allies in every corner of every organization in this state. Or we can keep saying that racial slurs will not be tolerated, and that we are shocked to find that this sort of behavior is happening in our establishments. No, the shocking thing is that we keep doing the same thing over and over and keep hoping for a different outcome.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. I guess I have a simple question. I'm a parent. I'm also a teacher. I teach in the next county over. I've been doing physical education for the last 17 years. I've been a parent for six years, and being a parent's definitely the hardest and toughest job I've ever been, but it's definitely the most rewarding. That being said, I'm here, and you all can have me turn around real quick, and I'll walk out this door if you can give me the right answer. Will children be wearing masks in the fall? Now, do you even have the authority in Carroll County to mandate masks on children? Because my kids have come home, and they're telling me they have to wear masks outside. Now, all my teaching and learning as a phys ed teacher goes against this. Never would I ever put a mask on a child. If I would have done that a year ago, I would have been locked up for abuse. There's no way that anyone would allow that to happen. And for some reason, we've been duped in the name of health, public health, and this is completely against anything I've ever been taught, and this is not what I'm going to teach my children. They should be having the freedom to breathe, and I would like them to have the choice. If you want a mask, you can wear a mask. My children shouldn't have to wear a mask. If my children are sick, then I will keep them home. That's public health. Doing what you need to do, be responsible for yourselves, being responsible for your family. It's one thing I've realized. It's the human sacrifice that I am now giving. It's not about me anymore. It's about my children. Now, I've seen the hypocrisy, and my wife and I were both phys ed teachers. We drop our children off at daycare. We've been doing this all year to travel all the way home to then virtually teach. So we put our kids at risk in a daycare so we can go home and provide for our kids through virtual teaching. I don't think that's right. I drop my son off at daycare, and what do I see? I see a two-year-old in a mask. A two-year-old crying for her father in a mask. Then I go to teach. Finally, my county has decided to go in person, and there's a second grader. She comes to me. She's shaking. She hasn't been in school all year, and she looks at me and says, "Mr. Bornman, my mask, it's falling off. My hands are dirty. I don't want to touch my mask. Do you have any hand sanitizer?" You cannot do this to our children. Please, give us the option. This is child abuse. No other way to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariana Kaplan. I'm a senior at Liberty High School. I'm here today to speak on an issue that's recently gained traction over social media and has been discussed a lot more within the student body because of a viral social media post I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with. There's been a lot of discussion about inherent racial issues that we have going on in Carroll County school systems, and it's something that a vast majority of the student body is incredibly familiar with. We frequently witness teachers and other students making insensitive racial comments and frankly disparaging racial remarks. I personally have seen teachers doing crude impressions of what it would be like, a white teacher doing a crude impression of what it would be like to be a black person from a ghetto. I have seen teachers discussing how all Asian countries are the same or interchangeable, and these are things that come from the top of my head. In terms of student body, it's not entirely familiar to see students calling other students racial slurs or doing impressions of other minority races. This is something that's frequently overlooked within the school and often goes unaddressed. It's a very regular occurrence, particularly for racial minorities. I'm here today because a friend of mine, a racial minority, couldn't actually be here, as well as some others, and I wanted to speak on their behalf in terms of the harassment that they've experienced. While I don't know the student who made that initial post personally, I do know many other students who can attest to experiencing regular harassment in terms of their ethnicity or race. And while I personally am not part of a racial minority, I can speak to being Jewish and frequently getting anti-Semitic or Holocaust comments. I know that this is something that is incredibly ingrained within our system in the school that we are in, as well as other schools that I have gone to for different school programs. But walking through the hallway with a racial minority friend and just hearing them get called a slur in order to tell them to move over is completely unacceptable, and something does severely need to be done regarding it. This is something that's gone completely excused by a lot of the administration just because of the habit of it being so frankly regular to the culture within the schools. The more minor comments get completely slid under the table when they're done from teachers or from other students or from administrators frankly, because they are seen as not a big deal. But to minorities, this does come as severely damaging to their educational and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Just a sec. And I'm sorry that you're sharing those experiences. Obviously, that is not the culture that we want for our school system. I've asked Ms. McCabe, our Chief of Schools, to touch base with you in the hallway so we can talk a little bit further. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of public comment. We now have employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent Lockhart, members of the Board of Education and Commissioner -- he's here tonight. Frasier. Commissioner Frasier. I'm Teresa Basile McCullough, President of the CCEA, who represents the teachers, counselors, RNs, speech and language pathologists, OTs, PTs. And I'd like to give a special shout-out to our nurse group tonight, since today is National School Nurse Day. Healthy children learn better. School nurses make it happen. And also, congratulations to the finalists for the Outstanding Teacher Award as well. And I have to say, it is so nice to see bodies in this room. So, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'm going to extend the theme of appreciation in today's report after I get this fixed. The love and kindness exhibited toward our educators from parent groups, administrators, and students was truly gratifying. There is nothing more treasured than a personal note or a homemade card from a student. In addition, it is inspiring when the community rallies around those of us who are in front of students. We are thankful for Bullock's, Marilyn Mallett, Plum Crazy Diner, Papa Joe's Mexican Restaurant, and Stables for contributing to door prizes to recognize the efforts of our educators. We encourage today's audience to support our local businesses. We were also very pleased with the messages sent last evening at the Commissioner's public budget hearing. There were 16 speakers, and 15 of those advocated for fully funding the budget. The last speaker was from Carroll County Public Library, and we certainly support their efforts and goals as well. Once again, we extend our appreciation for the support from the citizen participants. Lastly, as the school year winds down, we all hope for some sense of normalcy at the end of the tunnel. We continue to commend the hard work and dedication of our educators. CCEA also firmly believes that a significant compensation would be appropriate. Stay tuned. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Now we will get on to, I need a motion to approve the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for April 14, 2021. By Dr. Dorsey, and I need a second by Ms. Pataglia. Comments? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the unapproved work session minutes of May 5, 2021, FY22 Operating Budget.
So moved.
By Ms. Sevigney and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Comments? Questions? Corrections? All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I would like to hear from the Carroll -- we'd like to hear from the Carroll County Student Government Report. Good afternoon.
Do we have any of our students from SGA on with us this afternoon? Perhaps we don't. Ms. Herbert.
Okay.
Mr., you didn't get any information from our student reps, did you?
Oh, well, just to provide a brief --
Turn your -- yeah.
Okay. So just to provide a brief update from them, they recently held their May GA, Spring GA, the final GA of the year, and where they elected the new Board for next year. We all, at the CCSG Executive Board, we all hope to do a lot more activities next year, maybe some in-person activities as well.
Thank you. And Devonte, it's so nice to have you in person tonight. I wanted to thank you for being here tonight. It's really nice to complete our family. Okay. Dr. Lockhart now is going to be the emcee for several of these things that are going on here. First thing, we will have the presentation of the Rita Dow Outstanding School Administrator Awards.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to announce the recipients of the 12th Annual Rita Board Dow Awards, recognizing exceptional educational leadership in serving Carroll County public schools and our students. We're very happy to have Andrew Dowd here with us this evening, and we thank him and his family for their continued sponsorship of these wonderful awards. And now I'd like to share some remarks about Rita Board Dowd from her family. We created this award 12 years ago to recognize the contributions and sacrifices made by administrators and their families, something that used to go largely unrecognized. Rita turned to administration as she realized she could do more to benefit the educational community. This last year is unprecedented due to COVID, and the educational system has been put to many tests. It speaks to the value of administrators that they somehow found a way to make things work. If an Administrator's Week in Carroll County is anything like we experienced in Colorado, then a typical week might include hundreds of phone calls to staff and parents and constant shuffling of resources, not to mention finding time for their own families. This year stands out, and anyone who was nominated should feel honored that parents, students, and staff took the time to acknowledge your contributions this last year. On behalf of everyone nominated, thank you. We appreciate those comments from the family. For those who may not be familiar with these awards, elementary, middle, high school, career and technology, and alternative program principals and assistant principals were eligible to be nominated. Students, administrators, teachers, parents, faculty, and staff members, and other individuals were encouraged to submit nominations. The selection committee was comprised of Mr. Dowd, the previous year's winners, school directors, and the Chief of Schools. The entire committee reviewed every application and letter submitted. There were many deserving nominees, but only one administrator could be named in each category. Now I'd like to ask Mr. Dowd to join me in the presentation of the awards. The nominees for Assistant Principal are Dan Black, North Carroll Middle School, Dave Boerts, Northwest Middle School, John Code, Winfield Elementary School, Katie Finneran, Elmer Wolf Elementary School, Wendy Garvin, Winters Mill High School, Christine Hill, Shiloh Middle School, Susan Hopkins, Career and Technology Center, Chris Hines, Mount Arrie Middle School, Amanda Johnson, Spring Garden Elementary School, Jen Mitchell, Mount Arrie Elementary School, Kimberly Renfro, Runnymede Elementary School, Joshua Rutter, Francis Scott Key High School, Heather Seemis, Manchester Valley High School, Charles Weaver, Shiloh Middle School, and Shannon Zep, Francis Scott Key High School. The recipient, and they're all amazing folks, let's give all those folks a round of applause. The recipient of this year's award is a dynamic and engaging school leader who goes out of her way to accommodate the needs of all students and their families, both in and out of school. She is thoroughly invested in supporting her school community and was a constant presence when the school building was closed during the pandemic, checking in on students and staff to ensure the smooth operation of materials distribution, learning pods, and other key instructional components. This year's recipient of the Rita Board Dowd Award for Assistant Principals is Shannon Zep from Francis Scott Key High School. Congratulations. And so, did we want to get a photo?
We'll get a photo before you do, and if you wouldn't mind coming out in front of the podium, that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
You're doing your job.
And now for the presentation of the Award for Outstanding Principals. The nominees are Deborah Benner, Linton Springs Elementary School, Brian Booze, Century High School, Aaron Brillhart, West Middle School, Elizabeth Cunningham, Friendship Valley Elementary School, Rebecca Dupree, Carrolltown Elementary School, Janel Fosnot, Oklahoma Road Middle School, Amy Gramata, North Carroll Middle School, Scott Lavender, Northwest Middle School, Katie Purper, Winfield Elementary School, Gretchen Rockefeller, Carroll Springs School, and David Watkins, Shiloh Middle School. Let's give all those nominees a round of applause. This year's recipient is a well-rounded leader who prioritizes students and their academic achievement and has established a culture in which the school's work is student-focused. She has a strong understanding of curriculum and instruction and uses her knowledge base and experience to effectively model, speak to, and provide specific feedback for good teaching. Teachers often attribute the growth in the school's achievement data during her tenure to the culture she has helped to create at the school. This year's recipient of the Rita Board Dowd Award for Principals is Katie Purper from Winfield Elementary School. Congratulations, Katie. Do you have another picture?
Okay. Do you want to get a round of applause? Do you want to give a round of applause? Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next up is the Lifetime Achievement Award. The Carroll County Chamber of Commerce and Carroll County Public Schools periodically present the Lifetime Achievement Award, which recognizes an educator who has spent his or her career ensuring the success of
We didn't even call each other. I remember I'd like to hold a photo party. Thank you. For smiling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Next up is the Lifetime Achievement Award. The Carroll County Chamber of Commerce and Carroll County Public Schools periodically present the Lifetime Achievement Award, which recognizes an educator who has spent his or her career ensuring the success of our school system. The sixth recipient of the Lifetime Achievement Award for Carroll County Public Schools is Tom Hill, Director of Middle Schools. I'm going to make Tom stand here while I talk about him. Tom began his career in 1981 as my physical, no, as a physical education at West Middle School. In 1994, he became the Assistant Principal at Sykesville Middle School. In 1999, he was named Principal of Shiloh Middle School and oversaw the opening of the new building. Quite a giant task, opening a new building and welcoming an entire new school community in. Tom returned to West Middle School, where his career began as principal, in 2005. And for the past 11 years, Tom has served as the Director of Middle Schools, where he's led middle school principals through good times, tough times, and for one year during that tenure, he was even in charge of high schools as well. That's probably where more of the gray hairs came in, right?
Oh, no.
No? Okay. During his career, Tom has coached cross-country, track, and volleyball. His teams won multiple championships, and in 1986, won the state championship in both girls' track and volleyball. Throughout his career, Tom has always been regarded as an educator who genuinely cares about the people around him and reminds us to put students first in our decision-making. Let me share with you a few quotes, and we've proofed these, Tom, that other people have said about Tom. "Tom has never lost touch with what it's like to be a teacher in the classroom or an administrator at a school. Tom's strength is in his ability to communicate with people in a caring and understanding way. Tom's door is always open to help a colleague, and he is always willing to listen and provide guidance. Tom truly cares about people, always finds ways to help people in need, and is involved in this community. Tom is a problem solver who will work to resolve an issue in a way that addresses the concerns of everyone involved." And there was a giant list, we could go on and on. So we congratulate you, Tom, and thank you for all your work throughout your 40 years of dedicated service to Carroll County Public Schools. I hope that you enjoy your well-earned retirement and take pride in knowing that you have made a positive impact that will last for many years to come. Congratulations, Tom, and we'd love to be with you.
Thank you. I'm very humbled. I would like to thank everyone that I ever worked with, any student I ever had in school, parents. It's been a pleasure. And if you know me, this is what I do. I wear my emotions on my sleeve sometimes. But it's been a true honor to serve Carroll County Public Schools. When I first started my career, my parents instilled in me the value of education. They both unfortunately lost a parent early in their life, and due to the depression, had to leave school. I wanted other people to understand how much I valued education and to help them to see how much education can take them where they can go in life. I hope I did that, I hope I served you, but to everybody, thank you.
Okay. One more very important one to go, our Teacher of the Year presentation.
And Ms. Bowers is pointing around to get the finalists to break them in.
Wonderful. You want me to wait until they're here?
If you would please, thank you.
Teachers of the Year nominees were in the green room, right next door. They're on their way over. We're excited to have, as Ms. McCullough mentioned earlier, folks with us here in person, which is great. So they'll be joining us shortly. I'm trying to fill time here.
That's good. Okay, great.
And here we go.
There's two up front.
We saved this, the front row. Before I recognize our finalists and announce our Carroll County Teacher of the Year, I'd like to thank a few very important people this evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Jenna Eamon from Winfield Elementary School. She's our 2020 Carroll County Teacher of the Year. Jenna has also had the honor and distinction of being named one of seven finalists in the state of Maryland for Maryland State Teacher of the Year. She's done a superb job during the past year representing our schools and our teachers and our school system across the state, especially during a pretty challenging time. Jenna, you have a couple of comments?
Good evening and thank you, Dr. Lockard. Yes, I am Jenna Eamon, the Reading Specialist at Winfield Elementary. It has truly been my sincere honor and privilege to represent Carroll County Public Schools as the 2020 Teacher of the Year. So one year ago, I had the opportunity to tell my story, how by the age of seven, I had decided that I would be a teacher. And as a reading specialist, I tell my students, you have to support your ideas with text evidence. So the other day, I found this. Now, I won't pass it around, but it is dated May 14th, 1992, the year I was seven. Let me share you this evidence I found. Number one, I want to be a teacher. Number two, I will wear a dress with pink. Number three, I will use a chalkboard, books, and colors. Number four, I will work in a school. Number five, my mom works in a school. Number six, I picked this job because I like to work with kids. So I share this list, not because you need to wear a dress or use a chalkboard, books, and colors. I share this list because of number six. I picked this job, this job, the one that me and my colleagues do every day. We do this so children can do the same. They can pick their goals, achieve them, and exceed them, and one day, they'll look back and realize we knew they could do it all along. So to my fellow colleagues, thank you for everything you have done over the last year to ensure that our students continue to add to their list of wants and dreams. And to the next Teacher of the Year, congratulations. Let me be the first to thank you for all that you have done this past year, all you will do this year, and for picking number six, choosing this job above all others. I am honored to stand alongside you.
Thank you, Jenna. Well said, as always. We're very proud of the partnership we've maintained with the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce to select our Teacher of the Year. On behalf of all Carroll County educators, I extend our most sincere gratitude and appreciation to the Chamber for their continued support of our teachers. I'd like to say a special thank you to Mike McMullin and Peggy Soper from the Chamber, who are always involved and very active in making these things happen. At this point, I'd like to introduce the Chamber's eight Outstanding Teacher Award winners and our finalists for Teacher of the Year. As I call your name, please stand and come to the podium, one at a time, where we'll hand you your plaque. So we'll start with Jennifer Borsak. Jennifer is an eighth-grade US History teacher at Northwest Middle School. Megan Dash. Megan's a best program science teacher at East Middle School. Dawn Dill. Dawn teaches grades nine through 12 English at Century High School. Steve Finn Dyson. Steve teaches 11th and 12th grade Social Studies at Manchester Valley High School. Holly Furman. Holly is a media specialist at Shiloh Middle School. Timothy Litzell. Timothy is a second and fifth grade STEM teacher at Linton Springs Elementary School. Sally Powell, an ESOL resource teacher in Carroll County Public Schools. And Carrie Stitcher. Carrie is a grades one through three teacher at Spring Garden Elementary School. We call them the Great Eight, because they are unbelievably great. Before I announce our Teacher of the Year, I want to take this opportunity to commend all of our eight finalists for the exceptional, dedicated, and caring approach they bring to our students each and every day. We congratulate all of you and wish you nothing but the best. So I think right now, we want to get our eight finalists, at least my agenda says we want to get a photo with the eight finalists. So we're going to move to the front and do that once again before we announce this year's winner. So now, it's my great pleasure and honor to announce the 2021 Carroll County Teacher of the Year. This individual will represent Carroll County's teachers in the Maryland Teacher of the Year Program and possibly in the National Teacher of the Year Program. Carroll County's 21, 2021 Teacher of the Year is Dawn Dill from Century High School. Before I ask Dawn to say a few words, I'd like to tell you a little bit about her. Dawn has a total of 14 years' teaching experience and has been in her present position for the past nine years. She currently teaches English 10 and AP Language at Century. Dawn is a consummate professional, master teacher, and dedicated leader and mentor. She's a true champion for both students and teachers and believes that collaboration, inclusion, and compassion are keys to success for everyone. She works tirelessly beyond expectations to nurture students' academic growth and social well-being. Dawn values and believes in her students and encourages them to accomplish great things in the classroom. She builds a relationship of trust by encouraging students to recognize that what they are doing is relevant to them and engaging them to work harder than they might have thought possible. She takes pride in the fact that her students routinely score high on their MCAP and AP tests, but is most proud of her impact on how they feel about themselves and what they believe they can achieve. Dawn is the Health, Human, and Social Sciences Academy Leader, a member of the Instructional Leadership Team, and a member of the School Improvement Team at Century. She's also the co-sponsor of the Class of 2023. In addition, she's served as a lead curriculum developer for our English program here in Carroll County Public Schools. Dawn, congratulations, and the microphone is yours.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I teach students English, it's fine, I'll be coherent. I would like to thank the committee for including me with these wonderful teachers and giving me the opportunity to try my best to represent all the amazing teachers in Carroll County Public Schools. I'll try really hard not to let anyone down. And I just would like to thank the board for all of the impossible decisions that you've had to make this crazy year. And also, just because I really wanted to thank you for your decisive action with the email over the events that happened unfortunately this week. And I just think that's such a show of support for our kids who are still facing injustices. And for those kids, we want you to tell us, please, what's happening to you, because you think we might hear, but we don't always hear. So we're here for you, and just, I don't know how long I can talk, but two things. To the parents of our...
As long as you want.
Okay, cool. Sorry, oh, that was awkward. So to the parents of our kids, just thank you so much for raising these amazing humans for us to spend our days with. And they, I teach high school, so they might be irresponsible or impulsive or moody, but I see them differently, and they're amazing, and they care, and they're trying. And to my students, I just, I love all of you so much, and my job is so fun. I cannot imagine doing anything else. And to my Century colleagues, let's go Knights! Okay. Oh, and to my boys, Sean and Peyton, love you.
So Dawn, as you may be aware, being Teacher of the Year does have a few perks. Once again this year, thanks to Buchanan Auto Stores, as our Teacher of the Year, you'll have the use of a brand-new Kia throughout your tenure. You may have noticed on your way in that there are a couple of shiny new cars parked in front of the building. You'll have your choice of one of these beautiful cars. I'd like to thank Buchanan Auto Stores for their unwavering support of the Teacher of the Year Program. This is the eighth year Buchanan has partnered with us to provide the use of a new car to our Teacher of the Year. And I know from speaking to our former winners that this is one of the big highlights of the award. We certainly would like to thank Curtis Mummert, the owner of Buchanan Auto Stores, and also recognize here with us this evening Keith Grossnickel, General Manager of Buchanan Auto Stores. Keith, we can't thank you enough for your generosity and support. And I'd like to invite you to come forward. I think we have a banner. And I'm sorry, I think we have one other person from...
Jim Sands.
Thank you, Jim Sands. Sorry, Jim, don't want to forget Jim from Buchanan Auto as well. We want to invite both you and Keith to come forward. We're going to unfurl our banner, which will be displayed for the whole year on the outside of our building. So let's, where do we want to do the banner?
Maybe here.
We hope you like that picture, Dawn, because it's going to be on the side of our building for a year. I would like to invite, as they finish rolling up the new sign there, if our folks from, Keith from Buchanan wants to say a few words.
Well, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be involved with the program. It is our pleasure when we were asked this year, once again, if we wish to be involved. I can't think of a more fitting year to be involved. The challenges that you and your coworkers went through over the last year have to be amongst the hardest ever in your careers. And I just want to thank you for everything you do and for all the finalists. Great job, and thank you so much.
Again, we want to thank all of our amazing eight finalists for being here and representing Carroll County Public Schools so well. You do represent the best of the best. And while we can only have one Teacher of the Year, you're all outstanding, and we're very proud and fortunate to have you in our school system. And to Dawn, we congratulate you. We know you will represent Carroll County Public Schools and the teaching profession extremely well, and we look forward to an exciting year having you as our Carroll County 2021 Teacher of the Year. Thank you, everybody.
Dr. Lockard, great job, thank you. All right, now we will move on to the COVID-19 updates. And everybody else is coming in? Welcome.
Staff is filling back in. I want to see if we have Mr. Singer on the line. He and I talked earlier, I know he was busy with some of the announcements of the day. Mr. Singer, are you with us? There he is.
Yep. I'm here. I didn't think I was on the agenda, so I thought I could go home.
So you typically bring us some updates. I know metrics are trending very well right now, and we're getting more and more good news, I believe. Of course, we've been in meetings, so we don't technically have all that, but we look forward to what you have to share with us today.
I sent the slideshow to Carl Streeker. I don't know if you have them there, so that you can share them on your screen, or if you want me to share them from my end.
If you could share them from your end, that would be great. And I'm going to see, Justin, do you, does Ed have the ability, rights to take control of the screen and put his slides up?
I think I do. I'm just, I was just trying to, let's see. Chair Trey, I'm trying to, that's top window. There we go. Ah, there, did you misplace that? I got multiple screens going on, so I just wanted to make sure I threw the right thing up there. All right. Just real quick, as Dr. Lockard mentioned, our metrics are moving in a pretty positive direction and really glad to see today that the authorization for vaccinating adolescents that are in the age group of 12 to 15. We'll talk a little bit about that as we get in here. Our, one of the things that we've been keeping track of over the last several months is this CDC guidance related to schools and the total cases per 100,000 per week. We've, we had a big peak, I guess, back in late March, early April, which was the second peak we had hit after the holidays, and that was up to as high as 135.9 cases per week. We're down at 74.8 cases per 100,000 per week right now, which still puts us in the substantial risk of transmission category, but I'm expecting we're going to see that trend to continue to move downward. The numbers this week have generally each day been in the neighborhood of 10 to at most 15 cases per day, and I would expect we'll see that to continue to trend downward. But the positivity rate averaging in Carroll County is a little higher than the state level right now. It's been a 4.0. We were up above 5 for a long period of time, and it is down to 4.0. The state, I think the state average is down close to 2, but we're moving in a positive direction. If you look at the overall, since the beginning of the pandemic, our cases, it looks a bit like a roller coaster right now. We're down at about 150 cases per week if you include the probable cases for last week. And we are still seeing some outbreaks in schools here and there, and not large outbreaks because we're still continuing to do what we can to mitigate the spread in schools, but we are still seeing some outbreaks here and there in our school system. That's just our 14-day rolling average of cases. So I've been sharing this graphic with the commissioners for a while, for the last few weeks, and it's a, we modified it a little bit this week. It was just raw numbers before, but this is reflecting the cases by age group per population. So this is cases per 100,000 based on age group. And the one thing that's really noticeable here that I've been pointing out to people in the community is that our case rates of the people who are over 65 that are highly vaccinated, we were down to seven cases this week in that age group, which is fantastic. That age group was always up high along with other age groups as far as case numbers are concerned, and now they're our lowest, our lowest case rate out of any population. Our second lowest case rate is the 45 to 64-year-old population who are also fairly highly vaccinated. So I guess my message to everybody is if you're comfortable with getting vaccinated, do your research, get vaccinated, help us get through this pandemic. We're bringing the numbers down, the populations that are highly vaccinated are, the case numbers are dropping for them. Our highest numbers right now are obviously in our youngest populations. And, you know, those are the populations where we have the least amount of people vaccinated, and I'll share some slides on that in just a minute. Our deaths, they tend to lag the cases, the case numbers are improving. We've had a lot of deaths over the last month in the community. Even this last week, we had three deaths. Usually, the deaths follow about two weeks behind our cases, and as the cases come down, I would expect the number of deaths that we're seeing from COVID in the community to also come down. This is just a slide that I've been generally providing to commissioners to show them how many people we've gotten vaccinated. The health department's vaccinated, given approximately 45,000 shots at this point in time, and we went from administering all the vaccine we were getting any week during that same week to now the demand's not as high, but with the 12 to 15-year-old population coming onboard, that's changing a little bit as well. This is a, shows a percent of the population that's vaccinated, the yellow lines, the people who are fully vaccinated, so we're almost up to 50%. And that includes the population that's not even eligible to be vaccinated yet, so if you only look at the population that's eligible to be vaccinated, it would be higher than that. 39% of the population as of last week was fully vaccinated. So I think this is an interesting graph to put things in perspective. The people who are over 65 years old are 86% vaccinated, and we worked really hard to make sure they were prioritized because they were the people who were most at risk early on during this pandemic. And as you notice, as we go down in age, the youngest age that was allowed to be vaccinated up until today was 16. So as you go down in age, each age group we go down, they're less and less percentage of the population that are vaccinated. And that's because people feel, I think, that they're less at risk. But the more people we get vaccinated, it's the governor who was putting it today in his press conference, the quicker we can lift more and more restrictions. And, you know, people keep asking me, when will we be done with the masks? The governor kind of put a number on it today, and I think he said 75% was what he was shooting for, for percent vaccinated. I can't, don't quote me on that because I don't remember exactly the number he said, but he actually put a percentage on it as to where he wanted to see the state be in terms of vaccination status before we moved away from requiring masks indoors. This is, we've been doing a really good job. The only, the only population we've been struggling with a bit in reaching is the Hispanic population. Otherwise, our vaccination distribution amongst ethnicity here in Carroll County's been pretty good. The, we've actually done outreach and gone to a Hispanic mass at St. John's Church. We're going to be back there again in about a week. We've reached out to people at soup kitchens and other places, trying to reach those hard-to-reach populations. And even the school system has helped us try to identify some of the people who are harder to reach to get vaccinated. In our 65-plus population, we've done a really good job, especially reaching the African-American community. The rates of vaccination in our African-American community are actually higher than in our Caucasian population here in Carroll County, percentage-wise. Okay, vaccination clinics. Here's the, here's the important thing right now is, you know, as we get more and more people vaccinated, I want to be able to go to the Ravens games this fall and see a full stadium, and everybody else does too, and maybe we won't have to have restrictions and things of that nature if we can get to a certain point where we've got enough people vaccinated and enough people that are essentially immune to the COVID, that we're not spreading it around in the community. Our vaccine clinics are available at the town mall for adults, for Moderna, and we prefer people to pre-register through town on our website because it just makes the process move that much faster. And like I said, we're offering those at least three times a week for first and second doses at the town mall where the Old Sears used to be. For children ages 12 to 17, we knew this was coming. We got with Life Bridge, and we've talked to your staff, and also private schools and homeschoolers and everybody, and the pediatric practices around the county and said, hey, we want to make sure that as soon as this is approved, that we can run a clinic. Now, we're still pending the state approving our allocation of Pfizer vaccine, which is the only vaccine we can use for this population, but we're planning to have a clinic next Wednesday at the, at the town mall where we would vaccinate 1,170 people. It's for ages 12 to 17 only. We're going to involve some people from the pediatric practices. Life Bridge is partnering with us. And like I said, the school system's working with us. We're, I've talked to Carl about potentially having some school nurses there so the kids would see some people they're familiar with. We've got Lobo, the comfort dog, coming from the National Guard. He's always a popular guy, and we're looking just to try to make it a comfortable place for kids to get vaccinated. It's difficult for physician practices to deal with this vaccine because it comes in in vials that are, that you have to take a certain amount of doses out in a short period of time, and the Pfizer actually has to be mixed and diluted and has to be kept at a very cold temperature. So it's not easy for the practices, the medical practices, to handle this. So we stood this up in partnership with everybody that we can to try to get as many people vaccinated as we can shortly. And we have, we have almost 1,000 people that are already signed up for this clinic. We just put it out there about two or three hours ago, and I appreciate, well, maybe it's been four hours ago now. Appreciate the school system helping us get the information out there. If this one fills up and it looks like there's still going to be demand, we'll try to run another clinic, providing we can get Pfizer vaccine. I really, one of the things that really disappointed me early on was we couldn't get enough vaccine to vaccinate as many people as we wanted to here in Carroll County, and seeing people have to drive to the mass vaccination sites at Six Flags or at the stadium, it just was a little bit heartbreaking to me. I want us to be able to do this here in the community and take care of people here in Carroll County here locally. So if this, if this clinic fills up, which it's filling up pretty quickly, we're going to go ahead and we'll try to get another one scheduled. So, you know, the interesting thing, this is the CDC chart on what's considered to be safe when you're vaccinated versus what they consider not to be safe if you're not vaccinated. And I know a lot of our school-aged kids can't be vaccinated at this point, but now that we've got 12 and up, hopefully we can get more of them vaccinated. But it's, you know, it's a, it's a huge difference. And, you know, I was, I was glad to be able to be at the senior centers reopening the other day and know that we can do outdoor activities with people who are vaccinated and safely be outdoors without masks on. The, you know, the recommendation from the CDC and the state is still that if they're, if you're unvaccinated and you're less than six feet apart, you should still be wearing a mask. Now, there's nothing enforceable in the executive order anymore, but the State Department of Education and MDH and CDC still recommend masks where six feet can't be maintained between people. So I'll kind of leave that at that. Our appointment schedules are on our website. Other information about vaccine efforts and everything else we're doing is on our website. One of the things that's probably also worth mentioning is our mass testing site is closing down at the end of May, so we'll no longer be testing people through the health department at the Ag Center. People will have to go to private pharmacy. The demand's way down for testing, and it doesn't make sense for us to be running that site any longer. I know the school system's doing testing for students to try to help better manage the contact tracing and the quarantines and isolations you have to deal with there, and I think that's a great thing, and I'm glad we took advantage of it. But our testing site is closing down at the end of the month. So that's all I have, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all might have before we go ahead and call it, call it an evening. Somewhere I got to stop sharing. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. I just wanted to make, I just want to make a quick comment. I really want to thank Mr. Singer and his staff again, the coordination and collaboration, what we've been able to accomplish this year, and it's been challenging for sure, but we couldn't have done it without them supporting us. And so, Ed, please, again, I want to convey my sincere thanks, you know, to all of the collaborative work and problem-solving that's occurred. I know, I know Mr. Streker, I don't want to speak for him, but I know he echoes a lot of those same sentiments as we've navigated and worked through and tried to figure out the best way forward here, so thank you again.
Thanks, and I'm looking at the, it makes me happy to be looking at this. I actually opened up my vaccination clinic screen just to see that we've got over 1,000 kids signed up for the clinic already and got about 140 slots left. If that fills up, we'll do another one. We just, we get people vaccinated, and then we get away from having to quarantine teachers, quarantine students. You know, the vaccination makes those quarantine requirements go away and make things a lot easier for us to manage in the school buildings and just keeping people in school. Because I know Superintendent and I have already talked about, you know, if the state's still wanting us to do contact tracing next year, the attendance problems that could cause, but if we can get a high number of students vaccinated, that could eliminate some of that problem. So just encouraging people to do the research. I know some people are concerned about the vaccine. Encourage you to go out and look at the reputable information and the data that's out there and make a decision because I know it's a, it's a personal decision, and we're all concerned about our kids, and you've got to make the decision that's right for your family at this point in time. So, so thanks for the opportunity to talk about this evening.
Thank you. Comments, questions, anyone?
Mr. Bignee.
Can you give some updates on what the the number of cases are in the schools and how that's been going and quarantining measures and outbreaks and things like that? I know that we've seen a significant decrease in the last couple of weeks.
We are seeing declining numbers. We just updated our dashboard today. I'm going to see if Carl has that memorized at this point.
I could look at the dashboard online.
Yeah, staff numbers have come way down. And I believe that's largely due to the fact that most of our staff has been vaccinated. Both positive COVID cases are single digits. I think we were at four this past week, and the quarantines are down to twenty-five. And at one point, we were talking much, much larger numbers, which have impacted, obviously, staffing and covering classrooms, et cetera. I haven't glanced at the student numbers today.
Student numbers are relatively flat. And I and I know that there's, you know, from experience, we've we've had some, we've had a couple of outbreaks. And I do think it's important for the public to understand that outbreaks are a singular transmission because when we hear the word outbreak, a lot of us think they, you know, a lot of parent phone calls that I'm fielding are multiple, whether seven, eight, or, you know, fifty kids in a building. And and most of our outbreaks are individual student-to-student transmissions that are happening in both both the academic environment as well as sometimes community that they happen to go to the same school and sometimes in athletics. So but we really have had great experience, I think, in the big picture. And our testing sites have helped us to identify those students very quickly and also to help students to return as quickly as possible with the with after we identify them as a close contact, they can get a negative PCR test and return on day seven instead of day ten. So that's helped.
Dr. Dorsey.
I was just going to comment that the declining numbers that you're mentioning look good, especially when we pair it with the increasing number of students we're having in person now. You know, that data looks positive, too. I think about eighty-five percent of our elementary students are back in person. And the middle school and high school numbers or percentages have increased as well. So it's pretty positive.
Absolutely. And as a matter of fact, some of the spikes we saw earlier relative to the dashboard, I think it was important to note, just what you did, Dr. Dorsey, that the that with the increased volume of students returning, we did have some additional cases. But remember, the dashboard has always shown the students who are attending in person. So students who were not attending in person, we weren't reporting. So a lot of that was kids coming back and wanting to be back, not necessarily that there was more COVID. I don't think Mr. Singer's numbers would show that. I think it basically says now that our dashboard reflects students who had a desire to be in person and were COVID-positive.
Thank you, Mr. Streeker.
Sure. I hope I answered that question. I don't know if I did, but I'll sit down if I can.
Any other comments or questions before we move on? Yeah, you'll have to, yeah, raise your cards tonight because I, the way we're sitting here, I need to be over one to see. Okay, Mr. Mr. Kyler, you're on.
Yeah, and I know the governor did some relaxing today. I plan.
Turn your mic on.
Turn your mic on there, Kenny.
It's, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Evidently, yeah, yes. Is it on now? I I wanted to make a motion, and I still think, regardless of what the governor said, to just make it black and white for everybody. So I'd like to make the following motion. Effective immediately, masks will no longer be required outdoors on Carroll County public school properties and facilities. This applies to employees, students, and all others. For the present time, masks will remain mandatory inside the building and on buses.
That's the full motion?
That's your motion?
I will second that motion.
Okay, I was going to say, I need a second. And now we are open for discussion. Mr. Kyler.
Yeah, again, I think the governor allowed this today, but I'm not positive. And I'm not positive because we were in a meeting when it happened. But I feel very strongly the transmission rate outdoors has been exaggerated, and that's come to everybody's attention. Instead of ten percent, it's probably less than one-tenth of a percent. And and we just need to open up for the kids outside. Now, one of my concerns is indoors. And for today, I personally think that would be too much. But if the governor's saying his goal was seventy percent, and we're at sixty-six percent vaccinated, and he's his goal is maybe mask-free by Memorial Day, I would like to be proactive. We have another meeting now because of the budget, so we can talk then. But I don't know if it's appropriate to make a motion that if the governor relists lifts that, we immediately lift it also and hang it on his back. But that's discussion maybe for tonight. I'm happy with the motion the way I said it, if if everybody agrees.
Yeah, we have one motion on the floor now to not wear a mask outside.
Yep.
If you want to do that, you will have to amend your motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments about this motion?
I did want to talk a little bit more specific. I think your your motion was very specific, right? Like, so no masks outside on CCPS property are required, correct?
Yeah, right. I think it's not no mask, but optional.
Right.
Right. But there's a difference. So if folks still want to wear them, they can.
And I think it's better to to state it that way. Like, we could talk, but I think maybe for demonstrative purposes, we could maybe throw out a couple of examples of of what you were thinking, is that it's at recess for kids in elementary school, it's PE classes that are outside, sporting events in the stands? Because you said community members as well, right?
Yes.
It applies to?
Yes, all others.
Okay, students, teachers, and community members. So if they're on school property at a sporting event or otherwise, but outside?
Yep. And like Dr. Lockard said, everybody has the option to wear a mask if they feel like they should. And that's why I said it would no longer be required. I didn't say they wouldn't wear them. It's no longer required. And I wanted to include all sporting events, everybody in the bleachers. And but I recognize, and the reason I said on the properties and facilities, because I don't know if anybody wants to amend it, we have graduation at the Ag Center. That's more indoors than outdoors. And depending on what the governor does between now and then, my intention wasn't that we break somebody's rules. If if it rains and we have to go to a turf field that's in Howard County, they may have some rules, and we need to follow their rules.
Dr. Lockard.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just going to add to some of this. I know every time the governor updates us, we typically spend a couple days trying to seek, you know, clarification of what does that exactly mean for schools. And so, for example, I know up until today, and again, we haven't had the benefit of watching it, and I haven't had the benefit of reaching out to anybody to try to get clarification. Ed's got his hand up. But, you know, up until today, I know for outdoor stadiums, you know, they were considered ticketed events, gated events. We were following, we're trying to follow the governor's executive order there. That's why people had to wear masks. You know, I'd want to get clarification to make sure that that we're not breaking an executive order or going against. Ed, you you have your hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Singer.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't think, and I mentioned this in at the end of my presentation, but I guess I'll just reiterate it. I think at this point, and I actually have a phone call at seven o'clock with the MDH staff. Legally, the governor's orders only require masks inside at this point in time. And the limits on stadium and ticketed events have been, he lifted, he's lifting those as of Saturday. So, I mean, we still have to comply with the with the rules up until Saturday. But as of the, I think it's the fifteenth of May. But as of the fifteenth of May, they're lifting those requirements. I did mention that the CDC, you know, I'm not as concerned about the outdoor events with the with the sporting events and things of that nature. And if you guys want to lift your your mask requirement for for people outside at those events and things like that, I do have a little bit of concern about the recess with the younger kids that can't be vaccinated and aren't vaccinated at this point. Our highest case levels that we're seeing right now are in those, the kids that are that are under eighteen and the and the younger population, and that's where our highest case rates are at the moment. I'd encourage to wait till the end of the school year. I think next year, we're going to probably be mask-free just about everywhere. But I can't say that for sure. But I think it's a little premature if we can't keep six feet of separation between kids to be doing this during recess and whatnot. But that's ultimately, you know, there's not a legal requirement. It's just the the guidance that's in the MSDE guidance, the Department of Health guidance, and the CDC guidance says that if if you've got unvaccinated people that. Sporting events, I don't think I have much of a concern about that. But I am a little concerned about, you know, the potential risk you put kids in and transmitting it when we know that they're not vaccinated and are going to be in close proximity. But that's my opinion. You all have to make your decisions based on your best judgment.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Anybody else want to make any comments? Mr. Fabria.
I I will say that one thing that does concern me, and I think it kind of goes along with the rec councils. They have a heat warning advisory regarding, you know, what they should and should not do at certain heat indexes regarding equipment, whether it be a helmet, face mask, heavy gear, especially when our children are outside playing and it is starting to get warmer. And we had a couple really hot days there, a couple days. And we did hear a lot from families, like, my kid came home sick because they were dehydrated or they were overheated. And I think we need to keep that in mind, too. I definitely feel it needs to be a parent's choice, and that we can reiterate that to everyone. Like, this is a parent's choice. If you still want your child to wear a mask, just send an email to the school, let the teachers know. Like, I still prefer my child to wear the mask. Giving parents the option for outside recess, PE, I think that is extremely beneficial to the community to do, especially our children.
Any other comments or questions before I call for the vote? All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And it is effective immediately.
And you're fine with that. It's effective immediately, sporting events, phys ed, recess, lunch.
I just want to, I just want to ask Mr. Singer again, the sporting event she said is Saturday.
If I could point out that this, the governor's order doesn't get lifted until Saturday, so I would suggest that you guys are going to be effectively in violation of the governor's executive order with your sporting events unless you do something to change that at least for the next three days.
Mr. Fabria.
What is the attendance number that the governor's relaxing, though? I thought that was like two hundred and some. We don't typically have that amount in our stadiums at schools, do we? No, I didn't think we didn't have like that for sporting events.
It's not the attendance number that's the problem. It's the masking requirement is still in place until Saturday.
For what kind of events? I don't, Mr. Singer, I don't understand. I mean, I assume that's Camden Yards, a football game.
It's it's your high school stadiums as well. It says pro, amateur, high school, college sports. It's any gated. So technically, this is the way it's been for the last for the last month or two since since they lifted some of the restrictions. If you're playing a softball game outside, it's not in your stadium, the mask requirement doesn't apply under the executive order. If you're playing a lacrosse game and it's in the high school sports stadium, you're the spectators are required to have masks. That's what the governor's executive order legally requires right now.
Dr. Lockard, you have your card up.
Yeah, is it possible to amend the amend the motion to say stadium sporting events beginning Saturday? Was it Saturday, Mr. Singer? I think it was Saturday.
I think you said Saturday.
I think that would comply, yes. It's effective on, I think you said May the fifteenth, which is Saturday, right? Yep, May the fifteenth. So I think if you amended that and made it Saturday, it would comply with the governor's order.
Okay, Mr. Kyler, since you did the first motion, let's, can you make a second motion?
I would like to amend my motion to say all outdoors except for stadium events until after, on or after Saturday, May fifteenth.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Comments, questions? All right, I'll call for the vote stating that we still will continue with the mask off if they decide, but we will not lift the mandate for stadium activities until Saturday. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. There we go.
And I do think we need to really all be thinking about indoors.
Yes.
And if the governor lifts it, we need to do it. When I look at the, and I know it doesn't make me popular, when I look at the flaws in CDC, the ten percent transmission rate that was really less than a tenth of a percent, when I look at teachers' union modifying the plan to open schools to make it harder to open, it just gives me pause on what we're doing to our children, that it appears, it appears they never should have worn masks outside. And and I think that's sad.
All right. So, Dr. Lockard, if the governor makes another statement and changes some of the rules, and we have graduations coming up, then we need to have a special board meeting for for the use of masks at graduations?
Yes, I think we would need.
Oh, okay. Mr. Amelie.
Just one proviso. We are not holding graduations on Carroll County property. So we would have to abide by whatever restrictions the government property puts in place.
Okay, all right. So then that takes it out of our hands.
But if we, well, if we need a motion, do we, and like I say, we could do it at, we do have another meeting this month.
Yes.
We could do it at that. Can we say if the governor lifts restrictions, in other words, we'll do the minimum required by the location of the event or the governor's order or something to that effect, so we don't tie your guys' hands? I don't know if I'm ever passionate, but you can probably tell. I'm just, these kids need to get these masks off. And and I don't want to lose twenty-four hours.
So, Ms. McKay, with graduation, then, who would you be in contact with about use of masks at graduations then? Since that is not our facility.
Right. So we would have to be in contact with the folks over at Shipley Arena to determine what the requirements would be.
And they would give us the information then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have several other meetings scheduled over the next couple of weeks. So we could always, if if there were a relaxation, then we could add that as an agenda item to whatever the next meeting is. Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Dr. Lockard.
Yeah, I was going to say, over the course of the next few weeks, we do have that ability. And I also, I, so again, every time we get new information, then MDH sifts through it. Mr. Singer said he's joining a meeting at seven o'clock tonight. And there's there's always applications for different sectors of the community, and schools are one of those. I do wonder, and this, again, we're going to gather information on this, if this impacts our ability, certainly for attendance at stadiums, it sounds like it does, I'm wondering also about attendance at Shipley Arena, if that impacts that at all as well.
And, Dr. Lockard, we would also work with Andrea Hanley at the Health Department, who is who we also worked with when we were deciding how to do graduations this spring.
Mr. Streeker.
Dr. Lockard, I had to actually watch Governor Hogan's.
Oh, okay.
Before coming down here. So, and like Dr. Lockard said, there's a lot of things that are communicated. But the writing part is where really where the details come. Because, you know, he's giving a speech to notify globally. But I would expect that we would be following whatever, like, I don't think we need a special permission to do something that is less restrictive than the governor. If the governor says you can do X, we can always do X. We would need action to do something that's less restrictive than his or inform the community if we're doing more restrictive. So I would think, you know, based on the governor's remarks, he said at seventy percent, one seventy percent vaccinated status, he was looking at removing the indoor mask mandate. But often, like Dr. Lockard said, we'll get additional direction from Maryland Department of Health as it relates to students. I think Mr. Singer mentioned that about how the CDC has. I think Mr. Singer mentioned that about how the CDC has different things because the student population in large part is not eligible to receive a vaccine. So those are the areas I think the board, the board direction specifically would be helpful for us as to how the board wants us to implement whatever decisions are made by the governor. I think that's where our, it would be most helpful for us to have clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
Just, and just one more thing quickly, and I would just want us moving forward, if the governor has executive orders, if by law we're not supposed to do something, then we're not supposed to do it. If we have guidelines, like for instance, today, we couldn't be having school because of the cases guideline in that flawed reopening plan CDC did, we still couldn't be open. So I don't want guidelines that have been questionable to tie our hands. But I understand, like, that's my concern with stadiums. If that's the governor's executive order, if Mr. Singer's saying that, too, then we shouldn't do that. But, but as far as the guidelines, we just, I just, we just got to get broken away from this, and hopefully it'll help us in summer school, it'll help us in September 8th, and we got to keep pushing. And I thank this board because you guys have pushed so far.
Yes, we have, and we will continue, so. All right, any other comments? All right, Dr. Lockard, I think we're going to move on to board member and superintendent update. First thing, Dr. Dorsey, I would like for you to read your special note, please, followed by Ms. Pataglia.
My special note concerns National School Nurse Day. Today is National School Nurse Day. The professional nurses in our schools are dedicated to the safety, health, and academic success of all of our students. They play significant roles, not only in healthcare at their school, but also in helping students meet the challenges they face today, supporting education, and advancing student health. Our school nurses have met many challenges this school year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They were instrumental in educating students, staff, and parents on COVID-19, assisting with contact tracing, evaluating students with COVID-like symptoms, vaccinating staff, and performing COVID-19 testing at the school system's regional testing sites. Thanks to our school nurses for all they do for our students and our school communities.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia?
This is Pupil Personal Work Week. Our PPWs help to ensure that all our students have the opportunity for a successful school experience through advocacy, consultation, and connecting families to a needed community resource. They help to maintain a positive homeschool connection and consult with school administration, staff, and parents on a wide range of issues. Thanks to all of our PPWs for their dedication and effort on behalf of our students.
Thank you. And now we will move on to our board members' updates. And Devanchi, I'm going to ask for you to go first, since you're here tonight in person.
Thank you. This is my first in-person meeting. This feels like my first board meeting ever, so thank you all for letting me come in. I actually wanted to use this time to address the incident that happened over this past week, especially from a student perspective. So as I'm sure you all are aware, a sophomore from one of our high schools recently detailed his experience with racism at a county lacrosse game on social media. He was repeatedly called racial slurs by the opposing team members, and it got to a point where he had to make the personal decision to stay out of the game. First of all, I would like to thank that student for sharing his experience and using his voice, because it takes a lot of courage and bravery to do that. This sadly isn't a lone incident. Just in the comments of the student athletes post, there are numerous CCPS students testifying to facing similar racism in their schools and during games. Yet at the same time, there are also comments from CCPS students invalidating this young man's experience and expressing pride in the students who made those derogatory remarks. Several students have reached out to me since then to express their anger over this issue and also share their own similar experiences of racism in Carroll County public schools. Students of color in CCPS carry an undue burden upon themselves every single day. They are victim to slurs and racist jokes from other students, accents are mocked, and derogatory remarks are made in the classroom when learning about such events as slavery, Japanese internment camps, and the Holocaust. These actions happen in our classrooms, hallways, cafeteria, and athletic fields. Let me share with you all two experiences that students have specifically told me. I have of course gotten their permission to tell you all this, and they will remain anonymous. For instance, this is verbatim from one of the students. "As a South Korean student, I have faced comments about my skin color, my eyes, my name, and how I should or do fit into East Asian stereotypes. From other students jokingly pulling their eyes back to mock mine, to the purposeful butchering of my name, I have tolerated racism since my arrival to CCPS, and that is unacceptable. I distinctly remember in my freshman year when I walked into class and a classmate immediately approached me with a joke in mind. They proceeded to ask, 'How do Asian people name their children?' They throw pots and pans down the stairs. The other students around us were laughing, but I was not. Everyone had taken that remark as a joke, and I knew that if I had spoken out, I would have been labeled as sensitive right then and there. I'm sure other students of color have felt the same way I have and have chosen to take the high road by keeping their heads down, but there is no high road in tolerating discriminatory remarks like that. I should not have to think to myself, 'At least I haven't been called a racial slur in school yet.' I should not have to think, 'At least Carroll County has less racism than other counties.' I should not have to be grateful that it is not worse or physically violent when other students do not have to worry about racist remarks at all. While I acknowledge that Carroll County is not the worst perpetrator of intolerance, it certainly needs to do better.'" Again, this was verbatim from one of the students. To outline another incident, some students were discussing US history, slavery, and 3/5 compromise, and the following was what was said to an African-American student. "You should be happy with it. It being the 3/5 compromise, it's better than zero." These are just some of the numerous cases that I've gotten and heard about from students over the past few days, months, and years. As I've said, I've heard from students numerous times over my years here in this county about such instances, and have even seen some occur right in front of my face. But in most of those times, the victims shrug it off and say, 'Well, what did we expect? This is Carroll County.' At this point, most CCPS students and students of color are disappointed that this happens, but ultimately aren't surprised. These sort of comments have become both normalized and persistent in our schools. It is unacceptable for us to settle for that. It is unacceptable that minority students in our schools are comfortable with being uncomfortable, with letting instances like this slide by because they don't see any hope to change, for change happening within our student body or school climate. There is clearly a problem that we as a school system need to acknowledge and address. Change is needed, and we have the power to enact that change. There is currently a culture of tolerance for racist remarks within our student body and school climate. We have to hold ourselves accountable as a community, a school system, and a student body. This is why I would like to call on the superintendent and the board to develop an action plan for combating racism in our schools, making our schools more inclusive and safe places for our minority students, and making the voices of our students heard. We need to take action and create a plan to tackle all the everyday indirect, subtle, and unintentional acts of discrimination that contributes to this culture of intolerance in Carroll County public schools. This is not just a statement from me as the student rep, but it is a plea from me as a student in CCPS, a minority student in CCPS, an Asian-American and Indian-American student in CCPS. The need for change is now, and I would just like to say, please, please, help us enact this change.
Thank you so much, and I'm sure Ms. McCabe and Ms. Jones and a few others will be in contact with you, and thank you very much, and it was very hurtful, but I thank you for coming and telling us your stories. Mr. Kyler, do you have anything?
Yeah, and I, and I piggyback onto that, and I do, and I understand the need and the focus. I do want to compliment the staff for how quickly they jumped on the problem with that game and got investigating that and got, it wasn't taken for granted. One of the things I truly don't understand, and I don't know, I don't want to say it's a different generation, but I've coached both boys and girls a lot of years. Never since 1972 has that been allowed in our program. Never. And I just don't understand, we fight bullying, we fight stuff, is it that much we don't catch? Because like I say, it, it's hard for me to understand that, that anybody hears this. I mean, I was walking down North Carroll's Halls 25 years ago, and I heard a kid use the F-word, and I stopped and said, 'I can't believe you did that, blah, 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 blah.' Actually, one of the people working in the building said, 'I can't believe you did that.' And I said, 'I'll be honest, I can't believe you didn't.' You know, it's, it's just, if we make it unacceptable, it'll be unacceptable. We just need to do that, and thank you for your comments. And for me, I've done some MAB stuff and Board of Ed stuff, and all of this is way more important than that, so I'll pass.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia?
On April 27th, I attended the CAC meeting virtually, and we had the Boys and Girls Club attend. They went through their program, discussed with us the annual dues, everything that they're doing to help combat COVID, to help with our students as much as possible. And I do thank the partnerships that we have with Boys and Girls Club, and that it's expanding in our school system, and I think that's fantastic that we're doing that. I have some other things written down. The one thing I will ask the community is that this is a difficult time, this is a difficult situation. This is not Carroll County. It is not how Carroll County is. It is not Carroll County values. The biggest problem I do see, that I did see, is how people are reacting on social media. Those actions do not help. It is something that is being investigated to make further derogatory remarks regarding any student, and I don't care if they are black, white, what their gender is, what the religion is, any derogatory racial comments do not belong, and that's children and adults. And it has to stop. And yes, we have zero tolerance, and then it needs to be zero tolerance across the board. So we need to fix this and stop it now.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey?
I'm excited.
She's, thank you.
Well, I'll start by saying, again, I certainly have activities that I have participated in, we're sharing tonight, but before I do that, I do want to point to one, and one, I hear you, I hear lots of the other students, voices are hearing, hearing you, and I'm here, these are more than stories, you can walk around saying, you know, we heard stories, and this is how, you know, one student proceeds, he's being of self-esteem and persuasion, or an adolescent is listening, but another student, you know, these are more than stories. I'd like to, you know, recognize saying that these are actual lived experiences by students. You can't look at them as that, I think you're listening. Again, this is my truth to you, you know, this is what they're living, you know, they're trying to participate in that process, and, you know, it's my right to...
Oh, now I'm going to have to start all over and do the whole thing. But again, I was making the point with Devanchi that what she has shared with us, these are more than stories that other students are sharing with her. These are actually their lived experiences, and for students to live in our school system where we are expecting them to come in and get the benefit of teaching so that they can learn and move forward, if we expect them to learn in a setting where they're dealing with racial slurs and other actions that are impactful based on, you know, their race, their ethnicity, their gender, and all of those things, it's not right. Again, these are lived experiences, we have to hear the students, and we have to move forward with actually doing something. I like what you said, Devanchi, with, you know, we need to come up with an action plan. I mean, we can't just keep, you know, kicking this ball down or hand down the field and saying, oh, well, you know, it's just another story, or, you know, this is one generation and how they're dealing with it. No, these are situations that our kids are dealing with, and, you know, we have to make it better for them. So if we can come up with an action plan, I think it behooves all of us. This isn't Judy Jones's, you know, responsibility, or any of our equity liaison persons responsibility. It's all of us, all of us in our system have to do our part to combat this. And, you know, if kids, if they walk in school knowing what the rules are and knowing what's accepted and not, and what is not accepted, that's what we want them to walk away with. If they know that we're not going to accept racial slurs and other actions that make our students feel uncomfortable, then they know that there are going to be consequences. And I think once we can get it so ingrained in our culture that they know what the expectations are, then I think it's going to be better for all of us. So again, thank you, Devanchi, for sharing your story and the stories of those students who have shared with you. Again, I've attended some activities certainly for this month, but the one activity that I'll spend the rest of my time on, I mean, I just want to talk about the, one activity that I attended on April 21st. It was our elementary equity leaders session with Mrs. Jones, and it really ties in with what we're talking about now, because Mrs. Jones continues to provide training on culturally relevant teaching. So again, it's not just what Mrs. Jones can do, but she's really trying to infiltrate our schools by empowering our equity liaisons on all levels. So again, we're hoping that these equity liaisons can help to make some progress as well in their schools, because we're trying to bring everybody along on culturally relevant teaching. In fact, the session on the 21st began with a quote by James Baldwin. And for those who don't know, James Baldwin is an American novelist, playwright, essayist, and poet. And the quote that she shared from James Baldwin is, "For these are all our children, we will all profit by or pay for what they become." So again, these are all our children. Doesn't talk about the ethnicity, the gender, or anything. They're all our children. We accept them the way they are presented to us, the way they come in. So they're all ours, and we're going to profit by or pay for what they become. So all of her activities for that particular day focused on deepening an understanding of culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning to create and maintain an equitable learning environment for all of our students. Again, we have to hear the cry of our students, and we do have to move forward. So again, my other activities that I participated in, I've shared with Mrs. Lucido, and I'm sure she'll include those in the minutes of the meeting. And I'm sorry, but it does get to be an emotional kind of topic for me, not just a lived experience that I have shared from the 60s on, but, you know, it's just quite concerning to know that we're still dealing with some of the same issues. So we do have to move forward.
And again, Devanchi, I, I thank you so much for coming forward, and I know Dr. Lockard is going to address this coming up in the meeting. And I was not going to talk about where I've been or what I'm doing, but I wanted to talk about one of our, a family of ours in CCPS. Jim Stahl, four weeks ago or more, had a terrible motorcycle accident, and not only did it affect him... And not only did it affect him, his wife also teaches at Francis Scott Key. And I wanted to thank Shannon Zep, who is the Vice Principal of the Year, has been helping with Allison teaching her classes. And I just wanted to give a shout out, they have two little boys, people are doing food and helping out that family. I want to thank all of our CCPS people, friends and family that have helped this family out to try to get through this tough time. And I know we have so many good students and good parents and teachers and administrators out there, that I did not want to miss this opportunity to thank everybody for helping that family, and they are doing the right thing. And I just want to thank you, and there is a GoFundMe page for them. But trying to raise two little boys with your husband has been in the shock trauma for four weeks, over four weeks. He's still in there. I got an email from Allison again today, and it's going to be a slow process. So I just want to thank everybody in our CCPS family for helping them out. And now you understand why Shannon received the award she did, because they go the extra mile, and there she is, helping teach her science classes. So I thank everybody from CCPS for helping out that family. And Devonte, we will take care of your problem also. It's very, very hurtful. So, Dr. Lockhart, you're on.
Thank you, board members. I'll start by addressing the issue we're speaking about tonight, and I know I speak on behalf of our entire board. I recognize we have many great things about our school system. I know we have great kids and great families and a supportive collaborative environment, but sadly, I also know this isn't the first time we've heard about events, comments, jokes, scenarios, whatever it might be we heard from a speaker tonight. We certainly heard from our student representative as it relates to these types of concerns regarding hateful racial name-calling, and there's no room for it. There never has been, and there never will be. I applaud our students for coming forward with their concerns and showing support for each other, particularly as some of these unfortunate incidents and events unfold. As the Superintendent of Schools for Carroll County Public Schools, my staff and I remain committed to the success of each student in our school system. We have to ensure that social identifiers are not obstacles to accessing educational or extracurricular opportunities. Our own Carroll County Public Schools Equity Policy says every school and worksite within the system will be free of discriminatory acts of hate, insensitivity, and disrespect. Goes on to state that Carroll County Public Schools provides an equitable and inclusive learning environment that empowers students to understand and appreciate diverse cultures within and around our community. Those are great words on paper, and they're great aspirational goals, but we're not there. We've got a lot of work to do. I'm appreciative of the work that many have done in this system to move us forward to address some of these issues, but clearly, it's time to double down on a plan of action, as you've suggested, and we intend to do just that. And we can't have one, or two, or even 10 people working on that. We all need to work on it. We've heard from everybody here at the dais tonight that it needs to stop. The days of people just tolerating things are over. That's what has to change. That's what we intend to do, and it takes everybody. We also need our parents, our community members, to support us and assist us in helping us achieve these goals. We can't do it alone. Please, I sent information out today. As you deem appropriate, have conversations with your kids. We will remain committed to a welcoming environment inclusive of all cultures that reflects and supports the diversity, the ever-growing diversity of our student population, our families, and our community. That is the work we must do. I'm going to move on to additional comments. I'd like to begin by congratulating our students from the Carroll County Career and Technology Center, who earned medals at the Skills USA Maryland 2021 Virtual State Championships. This is the state-level competition for high school and post-secondary students who are enrolled in career and technology education programs. Our students earned gold medals in advertising design, American spirit, automotive refinishing, collision repair, technology, cosmetology, digital cinema production, graphic communications, photography, and promotional bulletin board, as well as three silver medals and one bronze. We want to, again, congratulate all these students and their instructors for their outstanding accomplishments. You heard about Pupil Personnel Week? Well, we want to congratulate Susan McFadden for receiving the Pupil Personnel Worker of the Year Award at the Annual Maryland Association of Pupil Personnel Conference. This award recognizes an individual who demonstrates an outstanding skill set and leadership in the role of a pupil personnel worker, including an authentic and dedicated approach to the delivery of services. The recipient also must demonstrate ongoing interest in professional growth and a significant contribution to students and families, schools, and the community. Susan works with students at South Carroll High School, Mount Airy Middle, Mount Airy Elementary, Pars Ridge Elementary, and Winfield Elementary. She provides support to students and families in the schools and collaborates with community agencies to meet student needs. She's seen as a worker who is a problem solver, collaborator, and advocate for the students and families she serves. Congratulations, Susan McFadden. We want to congratulate South Carroll High School for being recertified as a Maryland Green School by the Maryland Association for Environmental and Outdoor Education. Maryland Green Schools communities, including teachers, staff, and students, work to create a healthy and sustainable environment for everyone, and students learn to care about the environment and make a positive impact. We are proud to have 18 of our schools designated as Maryland Green Schools, as well as a green center at our outdoor school. I'd also like to congratulate two of our students who received special prizes at the Virtual Maryland History Day State Competition. Sumaya Ramanan, a 10th grade student at Westminster High School, received the Excellence in Labor History Award for her documentary project entitled "Tiananmen Square Massacre: Censorship of Communication." Natalie Castangaway, a 6th grade student at West Middle School, received the Excellence in Maryland History Award for her website project, "Union Mills Homestead Rural Free Delivery." In addition, Bethany Leader, an advanced academic teacher at Mount Airy and Northwest Middle Schools, was recognized as the Maryland History Day Teacher of the Year for Carroll County. I'm also proud to announce that our school system has been recognized among the best communities for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for our outstanding music education programs. This is the fifth consecutive year that we've received this recognition. The award is presented to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievements in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. Thank you to all our music teachers and students for their outstanding efforts, and to Christina Gruss and Carl Stewart for their leadership in our fine arts programs. Two more, two more good ones to go. Manchester Valley High School's Yearbook Invictus has been recognized for excellence and featured in the Jossens Lookbook 2021, celebrating the best in yearbook design and inclusivity. The Lookbook is a collection of outstanding yearbooks and their creative themes, designs, coverage of school events, storytelling, and photography. Congratulations to the student members of the yearbook staff and advisor Karen DePace for this outstanding achievement. They've received a copy of the Lookbook, as well as a plaque and banner from Jossens to recognize their exceptional work. And finally, I want to congratulate Joseph Loy, a senior at Francis Scott Key High School, for receiving the Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship. Joseph was chosen from over 5,800 applicants for this scholarship, which provides up to $40,000 to help pay for his four years of college at the University of Colorado. Joe has been successful both academically and socially at Francis Scott Key, and is an integral part of the school community. He has a strong work ethic, natural ability, and leadership qualities. He's excelled in upper-level classes, including honors and advanced placement courses, and the Project Lead the Way Engineering Program at the Career and Technology Center. Joe's captain of the school's academic challenge team and has appeared on numerous episodes of its academic. He's also the captain of the cross-country team and the indoor and outdoor track teams. In addition, he's a member of the National Honor Society Youth Leadership Consortium and Athletic Leadership Council. Congratulations again to Joe, and best wishes as he continues his education. Congratulations to all those students and staff we recognize this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. Now, we will move on to our reports, and our first one is virtual program. Dr. Lockhart.
I'm going to turn that right over to Ms. McCabe.
Good evening. We're excited to present to you what we have been planning for our virtual program for next school year. As you know, this school year, we have been able to offer to our families and our students both in-person learning as well as a virtual option. And at this point, we still have about 25% of students total taking part in our virtual option. We've received questions from our community about what our plans are for next year, and so we've been working hard on a plan, a short-term plan, to bridge through next school year while some of our community and students may still have some COVID-related concerns. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bricka, who will give a summary and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. What you have in front of you is a proposal for a full-time virtual option for Carroll County Public School students for the 2122 school year. As Ms. McCabe said, it is a transition year. We don't see this as presented as a long-term program for either the elementary or the high school students as it's presented. What you will notice, though, is that the program is distinctly different at the elementary, at the K-5 level, than it is at the secondary, the 6th through 12 level. The elementary program is a full-time synchronous program provided by Carroll County Public School teachers to Carroll County Public School students. Those teachers would solely teach virtual students, and they would teach across the county, although the elementary students would remain enrolled in their home school. The intent of the elementary program is really as a single-year transition to keep students connected to our curriculum, to keep students connected to their home school, so that by the 2223 school year or earlier, they can make as seamless as a possible transition back to face-to-face instruction. The secondary school program is slightly different, in that, again, it is full-time, but it would be an asynchronous program developed using vendor-provided courses. It actually is kind of the program that we currently run, but on steroids. Right now, as we've shared with you in the past, we offer what are called Maryland Virtual Learning Opportunity Courses, where students can take courses, be enrolled virtually now. In past years, they were enrolled and sat in their school and took a virtual course. But what we've done with the high school program is expanded those courses that have been approved, and we would have students then enroll virtually in those courses with a vendor. There is in-school support built in, you could see in the program. They would still be in their schools, but in that case, they would be using a vendor provided by a Maryland-certified teacher, but the teacher would be provided by a vendor as opposed to a Carroll County Public School student. As I said, that, it kind of fits into our long-term plan where we wanted our virtual program to go. Our goal all along is, as Ms. McCoslin, as they begin to work, to transition to school ogy and to providing our curriculum in that fashion, that we would transition to our teachers and our curriculum, and certainly pull back on the full-day virtual program. But we kind of tried to shoehorn the high school program into sort of where our intentions were for our three- to five-year virtual program. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have, to the best of my knowledge at this point.
Ms. Pataglia.
I'm glad to see that this is occurring and we're having this conversation, because we have been getting a couple of questions regarding it. One question I do have, and this was something that a couple of years ago, I was even like, "How do we work this out?" Is this going to be going into effect as far as, let's say, sign language is not available at Manchester Valley, but it is at Westminster High? So can those students potentially sign in at night to do that asynchronous learning for sign language, excuse me, and get a credit? Or they want to do a completer, but they can't take plant ag at Manchester Valley because there's not enough people signed up? So is this something that's going to be going into effect so those students can start making plans?
So our plan at this point for the virtual program for next year, I don't know that we would expand to, be expanding to that point. We still have a relatively small number of courses. The identification of courses was designed to have a pathway to graduation for students, so that for next year, no matter where a student is, whether they're coming in ninth grader, whether they're an 11th grader, they should be able to take eight credits for next year, four per semester, that would enable them to move their program forward. The program that you're talking about is, and I kind of joked as we were planning, we're kind of in year one and a half of our five-year plan, but we're also in year seven at the same time. And so that's really in the out-years for students. Our program, we're purely looking for students to take eight credits at this time. There are some courses that you'll see later on your agenda that are, as we were looking to find virtual courses to fill out student schedules, your policy and the Superintendent's Regulation on Curriculum Development talked about courses that are not substantially aligned and need to be approved additionally. And Angie's folks, the curriculum supervisors, have gone through and vetted courses like English 9, English 10, Algebra 1, and those courses, they've determined are substantially aligned to our curriculum, so we can offer those virtually. But in order to make sure we had enough credits, there are some courses, and I won't think of the name of one right now, there's like a film production course that you'll see. They determined was not necessarily aligned to something that we teach, that that's being presented to you. Our discussions have been, if it's on that course list and a full-time in-person learner would like to participate in that course, that they could, but we're not planning on having our entire course catalog offered virtually next year for students.
Ms. Pataglia, I think what you're asking is not what they're planning right now. They're talking about five days a week, virtual learning...
No, I understand.
...for someone that has to apply due to a COVID problem. What you're talking about is like when we were up at Francis Scott Key two years ago, and a student needed Latin. Could they then log in and take that virtually or follow that class? That is a whole different area that we're talking about, what she's talking about. So this virtual is for students who will be taking this five days a week, but not individual classes.
No, I do understand, but I want to make sure that it's equitable across the board. So if you have a student who is only virtual, that there's still other things that they could take too. To me, it's an all-around thing. I mean, it's in-school virtual.
It's what the state provides us with. It's not, this isn't the, this one is not the super deluxe model that they can take this, this, and this, and this. This is a model that the state provides. Am I correct?
So, yes, and what we're looking to do, though, is, I think I understand the question. We continue to look at expanding the opportunities for our in-person students to take virtual courses that they may not be able to fit into their schedule, or for whatever reason, don't have access to. So that does continue to be one of our focus areas for expanding virtual learning. I just worry that on either level, whether it's someone that's going to be completely virtual, or someone that's going to be hybrid, someone is going to come forward and say, "Why isn't this available to me?" Whether they're in-person or virtual. And I just want to make sure that we are addressing those issues, and we are making sure if a virtual student wants to take something, it's going to be available for them. Same with a student that's in-person. I just want to make sure it's equal across the board.
Mr. Kyler.
And I'll be honest, Ms. Pataglia, my concern's just the opposite. This program is a Band-Aid program to get us out of the COVID issues. If someone has legitimate COVID concerns and needs to do this, this is what is offered. And if they make a choice, they need to understand the choice they're making, and it's going to be limited. And if that doesn't suit them... And if that doesn't suit them, they need to be in school. Now, I think we do need to develop virtual classes for the in-school kids for all the things we've talked about, but I think that's totally different. I'm looking at this and my concerns. Hopefully, this is a one-year plan, period. And my concern would be that the elementary, we need staff. Are they, do they know they're hired for one year and may never work again? Do they know they need to be in the classroom? You know, are we requiring that? And I think we're not really adding people to central office. We're adding some people into the classrooms for this. And it's not cheap, but I think it's something we need to furnish for a percentage of our students. But then that leads to my last question for now. Suppose only 100 kids want this. Is it cost-effective? Do we need to do a minimum, say, if we get less than this, we just can't do it? It's, and that's why I don't want to, I understand what you're saying, and that's important, but I don't want to mix the two. This isn't something we're going to be doing five years from now. That stuff you're talking about, we need to be doing five years from now, if that makes, if I'm making sense.
So, to answer some of those questions, we believe that the elementary teachers that end up teaching in the virtual program would interview to teach virtually. So, they could be new teachers to our system who interview to teach virtually. They could be current teachers who wish to teach virtually next year. And then, when this virtual program ends, we feel confident that there won't be so many that we cannot have them back into the classroom in person the following year. So, we don't feel like we'll have to put anyone out on the street because they teach virtually for us for one school year.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Ms. Sevigny, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure it doesn't surprise you guys that I have a lot of questions, and I want to thank Ms. McCabe. She and I talked pretty extensively earlier today to answer a lot of those questions. But I think it was information that would be really good for folks to have here tonight. So, I think, you know, I have questions that are on two fronts. One is questions about how this program is actually laid out. And then, follow-up questions from those that say, okay, is this the right use of the state money that we're going to be getting for recovery learning and for this situation? So, I guess I would want to start with the initial questions of, how many kids are we thinking about that we think, do we have any indication of how many kids we think might want to opt for this program? And then, the fact of, why is it temporary? Because I think, like, understanding why we're talking about this just being a temporary piece is very important.
So, there are a number of systems statewide who are a little bit ahead of us, some who have had long-term virtual programs, not necessarily what they're going to offer. Some have started the application process already. None of them are quite completed. From a state meeting recently, I believe Howard County was looking right now at about 2% of their, our families are interested in the program through an interest survey. Other counties are experiencing 10 or 11% of their families. I believe it's skewed more to the secondary schools than the elementary schools at this point. So, the numbers I put out for you were on the 1% number, which, just round numbers in my head, are about 80 kids per grade level. It were, and then I put a 5% threshold in there. I have no idea what the real number would be, but that was just two benchmarks I could put out.
So, between, so, but Howard County said 2%, is what they were kind of expecting?
Yeah, and they didn't have all of the families responding yet. So, but their, but their initial response was about 2%.
Okay, which would be about 500 kids for us?
Yeah, roughly.
And then, the question of, you know, why is it temporary? You know, I was thinking that this would be part of a longer-term plan, but this is really just specifically a one-year bridge to get us through the next year, and state money would be allowed to be used in this way.
So, in honesty, the elementary school plan was not in our three-to-five-year plan currently. So, we were approaching elementary as a single-year plan. You know, there are questions about whether K-2 is even appropriate, given the expectations for learning and, I mean, and I wasn't a primary teacher, but I'm assuming it's probably pretty hard to teach a kid how to hold a pencil virtually. So, the K-2 question is, you know, we don't even know if we ever want to go there, but we do need to know in this transition year that we probably do for this year. So, there is the temporary nature of the elementary program, but we know that was in the out-years just based on our funding. The secondary school program is not the program that we envisioned in the five-year plan. So, we know we need something, and we know this can help get us to where we need to be five years from now, but it's just temporary for this year, and we're going to have to pull back on it, and we're going to have to adjust it, and we're going to have to shoot, you know, bring it back in line with what our plans were. So, that's why we're approaching them both as temporary, as transitional. Elementary more temporary than transitional, secondary more transitional.
Right, so this isn't what we would expect the long-term plan to look like, but there are elements of it.
Yes.
That we could use as part of a longer-term plan, and we could morph that into a cost-benefit analysis of whether this does make sense.
Our long-term secondary plan for this year would have been to add additional courses. Now, we would have never have planned to add the 30 courses because we don't really feel the need for the English Nines and the English Tens. You know, a lot of courses, we would never really need a full virtual offering. But, so, we bolstered more than we would want to in our five-year plan, but this is really where we were going. It's just much bigger. It's on steroids. And it allows for full-time enrollment.
Devanchi.
So, the secondary program currently is asynchronous, right?
Correct. There is, and Mr. Streeker can kind of address this if I get it wrong. The plan is that there will be a position in the school, a support, a virtual support coach, who will help students being the, sort of the feet on the ground in the building. And that person will check in with students face-to-face. If you think about it like, they will have several daily advisories, for a better term. Short periods of time where, one, they'll take attendance when they check in with the students to make sure they're engaging every day. But they'll also have an opportunity to see if they need tutoring, to let them know prom tickets are on sale, or, you know, to let them know what kind of activities are going on at the school. So, it is predominantly, the instruction is predominantly asynchronous, although most of the courses that the teachers do offer office hours and provide live instruction that's recorded so students can watch later in the week.
That is very helpful. I know, back in eighth grade, I took one of the virtual course offerings that we had in the math, and it was, again, completely asynchronous. And, well, I passed, and it was all fine. I did know that I had to go to a math teacher in the school frequently to ask questions and all that, so I'm really thankful that the students have that option.
Ms. Sevigny, I can't see.
I know, you probably can't see.
I know, that's what I said. I just asked Ms. Gaddis if I could move over there next month because I can't see the guards. Okay, yeah.
Right. Listen, I wanted to ask about homeschoolers and the potential for that because I do appreciate that there are specific criteria in here to request, or you have to apply, right, for the virtual school option. And it, and I, I'm glad that we have criteria in there saying, you know, they had to have shown acceptable attendance and acceptable engagement and things like that, the ability to learn virtually this year as part of the, being accepted into the virtual program next year. And there also needs to be a medical concern with COVID. But I'm also curious about, what about homeschoolers? If, you know, that we did lose several hundred kids to homeschooling this year, and would that be an option for them?
It certainly is an option to all of our students. So, if students were enrolling in Carroll County, because they're homeschools, they're not enrolled with us, they could enroll and elect at that time. So, that would be, we have data on how our students currently participated in the virtual program, but new enrollees, we'd certainly have to evaluate that differently. And certainly, a family as they're coming in from homeschooling that was requesting that, I think that would be like an interview. Our current plan is that PPWs would handle this as they facilitate already our out-of-district, so it somewhat mirrors that process of application. So, I think that would certainly be something our homeschool families may choose to engage in. You know, this is brand-new, so we really don't have a good way to test that right now.
But they shouldn't consider themselves to be excluded based on the criteria that's in here?
I would totally agree with you, yes. I would think that if a homeschool family said, we'd like to register in Carroll County Public Schools, we'd like to do a homeschool program. What I think is important is that we communicate what the program is, and many of our homeschool families already enroll in, I'm going to use the wrong word, but consortium-type programs where they're adding, using a different service to provide curriculum materials. So, I think what's important is we would communicate to the families, this is what it is, and have a good dialogue with the family so they know what the expectations are. As Devanchi shared, particularly at the secondary level with our plan, the expectations, there's a lot of virtual, you know, there's some synchronous, but it's a lot of independent work. And some learners are very much conditioned that that's a great thing for them, and some aren't. So, I think as long as we communicate that to families and the homeschool family, that, again, they know their child the best, and if this is something they'd like, I think we would certainly honor that.
Any other questions? Mr. Kyler.
And you mentioned the acceptance criteria, and it just thumbed on me now after Mr. Singer talked. If 12-year-olds and up are getting vaccinated now, why do we have a need for secondary virtual for COVID problems? There shouldn't be any. It should be very few kids. I don't want to see this an opportunity that I want to wear my pajamas until 10 o'clock, so I'm going to do virtual. And it's a, I think the secondary is a very basic virtual course for kids that have a valid reason that they can't go face-to-face, not just that they prefer it, they cannot. Am I correct?
Yes. Yes. Ms. Sevigny.
As I said, I completely agree with that. And, you know, we had challenged staff to come up with a plan, right, for a potential virtual school to deal with situations that might still be around come September, right? We knew that we didn't want our educators to have to teach in a hybrid fashion anymore come September, right? Like, that we know that that kind of pushed things to the breaking point, and we didn't want that to continue into the fall, right? So, we're basically saying they're, come up with something, right, from a virtual program perspective to, that would help us with that bridge or that transition come the fall. Now, I would like to, the kind of transition to the other part of what I was saying was, okay, well, the state, I don't believe the state is requiring us to offer this program. Is that correct?
I know of no requirement that we offer a program.
Okay. And we said that, you know, your best estimates are that the range, depending on how many kids opt into this, it could be between 2 and 6 million. And we know that the state funds that we'll be getting for recovery learning would, could be used in this fashion, but they don't have to be used in this fashion.
Correct.
Okay, so then, I'd like to kind of transition to the discussion to, do we really want to be, I think it's good that we thought through this, we appreciate staff putting it together. Now, I think the discussion to have is, is this the best way to spend the money that we would be getting from the state for recovery learning purposes, right? Understanding that, to your point about, you know, virtual course offerings to students that, you know, at FSK, like, if they have an issue, like, we're going to be resolving and working through that on a completely different.
Basis.
Basis, right? I mean, that's kind of separate from this.
Yes, it's a completely separate program.
Right, okay, so that will be addressed, and we'll move forward on a separate basis. But for this specifically, is this really, are there other ways that staff would say, oh, we think it would be better to spend the recovery money from the state in this way, especially given the information that we're finding out now about vaccines? Like, there shouldn't necessarily be a medical need come the fall, or it should be such a small number of students that we might be able to figure out a different solution for those. So, I guess I kind of put that out as a supposition. Like, are there other ideas? Do you think this is the best way to use the money, or would you recommend other things?
Well, we'll still have, for students who have serious medical conditions, we will still have the choice of home and hospital through Student Services. So, Mr. Streeker, if you would like to just talk about what that program will be able to continue to provide?
Sure, and we haven't had as many students this year in home and hospital. We have had some, very few because of our virtual options, the way we're operating this year. The concern about home and hospital and the big picture, there are generally two categories of students that we serve in home and hospital. Students who have catastrophic injuries or significant health, like ongoing cancer or something like that, or have an injury that sustained that they can't be safe in a school, like a broken leg that's exceptionally. So, we provide home and hospital services to them at their house. And this year, we've provided that virtually, and often, we've linked them up to their existing teacher through the mechanisms in place. The other aspect is students who have, we actually have two actual applications. The other one is for students for anxiety or mental health. And there are different requirements under the law of how we treat those. For the students that have mental health needs, and that's the reason for their home and hospital, we have a 60 calendar day approval process. So, that doesn't really line up in our current plan because our current plan is a semester. So, if we were to use home and hospital services for a student who perhaps presented a doctor's note and said that I have, there's an anxiety piece that's contributing to the reason I cannot come to school because of COVID, that has to be, I won't get this all right, but conceptually, it has to be reviewed by a psychologist as well as signed off by a psychiatric, there's a, it's a high-level certification, I think a psychiatric practitioner. It's not, I don't even think a nurse practitioner can sign off. There's a specific credential that you need for that person to evaluate a student for a mental health condition. And then, two aspects of that that are important. It is approved for 60 calendar days, and part of the process is we need to have a transition plan to transition that student back to school. So, during that 60 days, not only will we be providing educational services to the student, and that's often, you know, our home teachers are working with the classroom teacher of record and getting to work and keeping the kid up academically, but we're also providing services and a plan to transition that student back to their home school. Sometimes, they get re-approved within that 60 calendar days for another 60, but there's a, there's a high level of intentionality about that 60 days so that the goal is to return the student to their typical school environment. So, I look at that as very different than virtual school, to be candid, and I think we need to be careful that we don't mix apples and oranges there. But certainly, if the number of students was that small, you know, we would be going after the home and hospital piece, perhaps. But the caution is, depending upon the reason of the student, we are bound by law with those other pieces, with the 60-day requirements.
Thank you. Dr. Lockard, thoughts?
Right. You know, Ms. Sevigny, I think your question kind of boils down to, if we didn't do this, how would we utilize the funds, correct?
Right.
Well, I certainly can think of, and we've talked about this, we've talked about the need for, and these are one-time funds that we're talking about. That's why we were trying to think about, how do we bridge to the next iteration, right? You know, our in-school students are going to need, I think, over the next couple of years, the additional support. We've already put plans in place for recovery learning. In my mind, that comes also in the form of some things that we were thinking about pre-pandemic, like additional counselors to provide support for students, behavior support, behavior specialists kinds of support, PPWs. I could, we could eat up the total of the virtual programming pretty quickly with those supports for students who are returning to us in person in our schools.
And I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one thing about the, some of these costs are locked in, but then a great deal of the costs are variable. So, if the students don't show up in the number that we, we had the plan, and we have to kind of plan for some fairly significant number to show up, but if they don't show up, those savings would be rolled into some of the other things that Dr. Lockard was talking about. So, we're, for planning purposes, we did have to look at something, you know, somewhat robust enough to handle, you know, a population that could show up. But if it truly ends up not. truly ends up not being a large number of students, those savings will be utilized in other, in other ways that, you know, we have, we have, what would you call those? We have a list of other things that we'd like to do that we don't have dollars to do. Those dollars would be freed up to address some of those things.
Okay. So it sounds like, so about $2 million, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to thank Chris for the information. I didn't see your card back up.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay. So it sounds like there's about $2 million of fixed costs, and then on top of that, it would be variable depending on the number of kids who come back. And we could make it very specific. So there are going to be some situations, right, where we would want to have something like this, but we wouldn't necessarily want it to be widespread as part of the one-year bridge program. Like, we want to eventually get to a robust virtual offering in various directions, but this isn't that, right? This is really a one-year bridge. And so, does it make sense to kind of keep it to a bare minimum for the situations where we, the kids truly need it, but then that frees up some of that money to use in ways that we think it would be much more useful for our students over the coming year?
So the current elementary plan slots a grade-level teacher at each grade, you know, and if the world were perfect, that would be about 20 kids per grade, and that would be a classroom. Now, if the world's not perfect, so we know full well that, you know, we might have seven kids in third grade, but, and maybe 26 kids in fifth grade. So it's not going to line up perfectly, but we did slot one grade-level teacher to teach both, well, I mean, it could be puzzled together in multiple ways, but knowing that that's generally a class size. So, you know, if we, if we get somewhat less than 1%, but it's 15 kids a grade, we're still going to need one teacher per grade, and we're going to still need the special area teachers to cover it. So it's not a, it's not a one-to-one student alignment. You know, we're talking about chunks of kids, you know? And once we get to another chunk, well, we might need two fourth-grade teachers. I guess I need to stay in front of the mic. Yeah. So at the high school, it's closer to a one-to-one because there's an enrollment fee. So, you know, if a kid enrolls, we pay the enrollment fee, and the student takes the course, although there are some fixed costs in the building personnel. But the elementary is more of a chunking. You kind of got, I had to put it in my mind in that way.
I just, I just do want to say one thing, like for a blanket statement with Chris talking about money. I am thankful that we are getting this one-time money, but I want to make sure that it does go in the classroom and not in this building here. We need it boots-on-the-ground with, you know, like Dr. Lockard said, behavioral specialists and more teachers or whatever. And I think our numbers are looking pretty good ratio-wise, but, you know, I know many years ago, we, people would call this the ivory tower, and I know we had cut and cut and cut. But I really do hope that the majority of that, you know, goes out into our schools unless we see necessary, but I really want it out there for the teachers and the whatever, nurses or psychiatrists or whatever we can do for our children. Ms. Pataglia, then Dr. Lockard?
Give examples of what classes are going to be offered for those virtual-only students.
The elementary program will be essentially the elementary program. Middle school, the, we have identified the four content areas. You'll notice on the agenda item under discussion, there are some middle school courses that don't, like appreciating music. We don't necessarily teach that course, but there will be a fine arts program, there will be a physical education program, there will be a family consumer science option, much like at most middle schools, students don't necessarily take that every year. So there are not three options there, and there are CTE options. So there are, it is a full middle school program available. It's just not, you know, that, right now, students might choose to take vocal music as opposed to instrumental music. They're not going to have a lot of choices, but there will be a full program. At the high school, we've put together a similar program and that we went through and that we looked at the four content areas. So there is, there are four credits of English, or maybe five just because of the cycles. There are the standard math requirements. We basically went through the 25 and a half graduation requirements and said, "You can meet these, and then let's look and see if there are some other electives that are available that would align with our curriculum, or maybe that they are close to what we would do and they're being brought to you tonight." So I'll hold, there are, it is a limited offering of courses that are available, and we hope that it is broad enough that we're not going to ask a student to waste two credits their junior year to take them off course, but it's also that we know that they're going to have to make choices, and they may not be able to do the CTE program or go to the tech center as they wish to. Those are choices that are going to have to be made, but that they can still take eight credits and move towards graduation, to graduate on time.
Okay. Dr. Lockard?
I'm good.
Oh, okay. Okay. Mr. Kyler?
So if I understand this right, you need to get students to apply, and then you'll know a lot more about the numbers. The elementary is more fixed cost where the high school and middle school, if it's 500 or 250, you're paying more per student, and so it's flexible in that. And then I just, I don't want this to be, in my opinion, confused with going virtual. For instance, if a student wants to take AP chemistry, and they can't get it and ends up being virtual, they're probably going to do that in a computer lab within the school. That's not, you can't, you can't stay at home and take the AP classes. That's just not going to be offered. And I think people need to understand that. We're trying to supply something, and the bridge was a good word, to bridge this so that if there's students that cannot come to school, we're offering something for them. And hopefully, that helps us get back some of the private schools, some of the homeschool kids. It seems like, and you had asked that, you're already getting some homeschool kids back now just because they can attend face-to-face. So I think that's, hopefully, that's going to attract them also, correct?
Sure. Mr. Kyler, I can give you just round numbers, and these fluctuate daily, literally, but November of 19, we had around 1,200 students homeschooled that were under oversight. At the highest peak during the pandemic, we went up to 2,200. And currently, I have notes here, currently, we're, we've had 162 just recently return, and we're approximately 1,600 homeschool students. And so the trend is returning. As we do our homeschool reviews at this time of the year, families, we do ask families to indicate. They don't have to, but most of them are very forthcoming about what's going on. And generalized feedback is, you know, well, it will depend. I'm curious about, you know, what, you know, five days a week, like, what's CCPS going to look like? And that will certainly drive that. And I'll be honest, there's people on both sides of that. So, you know, it's certainly not one way. Like, if we're open five days a week, no masks, and everything's normal, we're back to what we're traditionally, there are also probably families in that that say, "Maybe if I can have a virtual option." So I don't have a good gauge of that exactly, but I will say that we're certainly trending down, and families are indicating a return to that.
Ms. Sevigny?
So I guess overall, then, we're basically saying, some of our constraints are intent for the fall, right? We intend to be open five days a week. We intend for our teachers not to have to teach in a hybrid fashion. Those are, but we still may have a small portion of our population that are going to need to exercise something like this. So we just need to try to optimize the solution, right, so that we don't lose out on the opportunity costs, right? The opportunity costs for making this bigger are that we don't get to use those recovery learning dollars in what we believe to be a more effective way, right? So limit it, limit this to truly the small portion of the population who needs it, like there is a medical situation that requires it. Otherwise, we think that we have much better ways to spend the state dollars. Is that a valid way to be looking at it?
Yep.
Okay.
Dr. Lockard, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Okay. Oh, Devaunche?
Just going off a bit of what Mr. Kyler said, will AP classes be offered in the secondary virtual course offering?
There are, it sounded like my mic wasn't on. There are a small number of AP courses that are available. It's not the full array. And plus, there are some that are still available to, that were on our original list in the past. So those would be available as well.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Now we may, now we will move on to a pillar for updates.
Just real quick, I wanted to do give a next step because I know people are wondering. I wanted to let you know that our programs do need to be approved at MSDE, so it doesn't sound like there's any major changes. So a plan very similar to this will be submitted to MSDE for approval, and they're saying between about a week, one to two weeks for a turnaround on that. And so our goal would be to have everything in place so that we can be very, very quick. And a turnaround is, hopefully, at the beginning of June, the information will go out to families for choices.
Well, thank you very much for all your information. Thank you. All right. Now we'll go on to a pillar for updates. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brickah, Ms. McCabe, and a lot of work, thought has gone into that. May is the designated month for the second pillar four report during the year. This report focuses on the third priority focus area of student referral data. Ms. McCabe, Mr. Streaker, their team have provided updates and give some sense of where we think future focus will be placed when we discuss revisions at our strategic plan review in June. So with that, I'll make staff available for that report.
Our report members says it's a report. We've provided the report, I guess, but I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have. I could summarize the report. I'm not, it's awkward because I'm, one, it's nice to be in present, in person. That is a nice change. I'm not on a screen, so that's weird, and I'm telling these presentations. So I guess I'd open up the questions you may have about the report in general. I guess the highlights I would like to hit, and I think, you know, as we articulated in the report, is, at the end of the day, the, what we're measuring in the pillar four and in the strategic plan, the board's strategic plan, we, and I brought this up last year, I believe, when we talked about this, is, is that its referral data actually representative of what we're trying to measure, right? I think that that's an important alignment. And that's noted in the conclusions, that we're looking at, possibly looking at a different approach to measuring this, particularly as it relates to the percentage of students. When you think about the uniquely identified students that contribute to this data, it's in the, as a system, about 5% of the students are even contributing to this. And we really thought a lot about the work of the elementary behavior task force and how when you drill down in the data, you know, one student may have one referral, and one student may have 60 or 70 referrals. So the data can get skewed very much, and from our perspective, discipline data is most used to develop, monitor, and implement individualized plans for students. So when we have a student who's struggling, you know, we're going to record that behavior, we're going to implement plans and address that. So from that perspective, we certainly have had a lot of conversations about perhaps exploring, doing a survey to really get at these two highlights of the strategic plan of what we're trying to measure, with the welcoming culture of diversity in the learning-work environment and promoting a culture of respect and civility. Any questions?
Carl, I do agree. It only takes one or two students for repeat offenders, and I've seen that. And if you take those, maybe two or three out, it just, it changes the whole ballgame. So, but I'm glad you brought that up.
And we're, and to that point, Ms. Herbert, we're looking at getting the student voice collectively. And as the data shows, 95% of students aren't represented.
Absolutely.
And that's the piece. And in addition to that, this time next year, we won't have any data. I'm just being, because we haven't had school. That's why we truncated the data at February, because starting in February, students started to exit as COVID started to become more familiar to what was happening. So next year, at this time, I mean, we could have our pillar update, and we could all celebrate how great it is, because the discipline data will look phenomenal, but we know that that's not really going to be measuring what we're looking at.
Right. Dr. Dorsey?
I just wanted to comment that, again, I hear what you're saying about next year being the new baseline for us. And over the years, I have asked to see a breakdown by race and ethnicity, so thanks for providing that. However, when I look at these charts, I mean, because the majority race, because their bar is so high, you know, it sort of skews what we're looking at with the breakdown of the race and ethnicities. But again, I do appreciate you sharing that for us in this way, this time. I still see that, you know, our Black or African-American students do have some high numbers there. And I do think that some of the programs that we have in place, you know, for example, the sources of strength, you know, at the middle and high school levels, hopefully, that will be helpful for us. And I know you've noted in this the things that we're doing at the elementary level that I think have really led us to see some better numbers or better results here.
Absolutely. And Dr. Dorsey, something we also gave a lot of thought about when it comes to the ethnicity, that's the total and not the uniquely identified student. And I think that's also an important piece, because if we were to look at the individual students that contribute, that's different information. So this is the total number of referrals from a, from a total perspective, not how many individual students. Because as we know, if we have one or two youngsters who are having a tough time, they really tend to skew the data. And we really, we dove into that at a macro level for elementary school prior to my appointment in this position. Ms. Sevigny, I know that you were on the task force at that time as well. And, you know, our schools are looking at that data. And at the end of the day, like I had said in the beginning, the intent of tracking discipline and looking at students is to create and develop plans for them to be successful in the school. Let's look at what's happening. Let's look at the behavior, and let that team work with that individual student and family to monitor whatever supports we're doing and see how they're working out. So certainly, that is something that we did at your request, but also, I think, perspective on the individual students is also something important. And our schools are looking at those and breaking them down.
Right. And I know that, again, that's certainly very important. And I know that you can have a very small percentage of the students in a school who account for the majority of referrals
Yes, ma'am.
that are present. So, again, I just appreciate, appreciate your sharing the breakdown for us. And we look at the numbers, and I know the schools look at the names, and I know they're working hard to have our kids available for learning, because that's the bottom line, to keep them in the classrooms and keep them available for learning.
Yes, thank you.
Devaunche?
So it states that the sources of strength program is going to be implemented in the middle school starting next year. I know that especially at Winters Mill High School in particular, it's been, the program has been present there for many years. So do we know how effective that has been in terms of referrals and discipline?
Not particularly. So the challenge is, we haven't measured it through that lens. You know, we do have each individual school broken down, but again, the hard part, most of, like PBIS and sources of strength, at the end of the day, the global perspective is that they are climate and culture and relationships and creating a welcoming environment. They all promote that. And they do it through different lenses, but at the end of the day, all the programs, that's kind of where they lean to. Sources of Strength has been an exemplar of that in our school system, and I think students who have participated in that at Winters Mill would provide that feedback. And it's, you know, it's a student-involved club where the students really engage. And one of the pieces, and we're looking, I know we have a pillar update or a work session in June, is perhaps to look at somehow doing survey data, and then that survey data would guide that individual team. So my vision of that would something be, would be like the sources of strength team working with their school leadership and the school leadership team saying, "Here's our survey results of our school. Here's some events we're going to plan to target, those specific things within our school." And then, so that survey has a very intentional purpose of what we're trying to achieve. So Devaunche, and that's actually kind of one of those challenges, the discipline data doesn't necessarily result in, demonstrate the success of a program like sources of strength.
And also, how, so how effective have schools been in using restorative justice practices instead of just suspensions and expulsions for students? Because oftentimes, they don't end up being the most effective in terms of discipline, especially as we see that most of the high number of referrals come from most of the high number of referrals come from repeat offenders and, and students who repeatedly get referrals. So...
So on the continuum of supports in the, in the discipline process that we look through now, we have restorative approaches are built into that at some level. And that's been in place for some, quite some time. But we're certainly learning on that. We have a team that's working on that. Would it not be for COVID, we would have been implementing that this year and some, piloting that in some schools. So we're going to be implementing that next year in some targeted schools. We have a team that's been trained on restorative approaches. And, and they're going to be working with some schools to put those very things in place. So we're, we're building that right now. COVID, literally what happened was, we were, we were going to do restorative approaches and then fill in social emotional learning. When COVID happened, we pivoted and we put in the social emotional curriculum. We, we used resources to purchase the curriculum and put that in place now. We've kind of fronted that. And then we're, we're building the restorative approaches in.
Yeah, thank you. And I definitely think that, and even like data shows that those practices tend to be very effective in reducing discipline issues throughout like school systems. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Sevigny?
I did just want to thank you, Mr. Streaker and, and the team. I actually went back to watch the, the May meeting from a year ago, because I remember that we, we had asked for a lot of things. We had asked to see a lot of things. And you have everything included in here that we asked for. So first off, I just want to say thank you for that. Because I think the, the, the truth can be found in the data and solutions can be found in the data. And, and so I understand there are, there are intricacies and issues with, you know, alignment of whether this really is the right thing to look at. But I think from the fact of, this is built into the strategic plan, right, the, you know, we've got the promote a culture of respect and civility as one of our, one of our goals. And we see that there, you know, disrespect and disruption, that, that level of discipline is on the rise, you know, across the school system. So trying to really dive deeper into those numbers, I think, is really going to help. And I think we saw that as part of the, the elementary behavioral task force, right? We started digging deeper into those numbers. And we understood that it was a lot of repeat offenders. It was very specific types of situations. And that led us to the, the first step of being, well, we think there's an additional school psych, right, is, is, is part of the solution for that situation. But at middle school, it might be very different, right? And it looks like elementary is making good progress. But we've, we're actually seeing significant deterioration at the middle school level. High school seems to be bouncing around a little bit. So I'm not quite sure I understand the, the dynamics of that yet. But I, I think that, you know, the information where you provided it by school, you know, looking at elementary schools, like clearly something's going on at, at Manchester and at Robert Moten and Runnymede, you know, that we don't, isn't necessarily readily apparent. But if this information is available and the school improvement teams are looking specifically at it, you know, that, that's part of the solution. And again, with the, the ethnicity pieces, you know, there, there's, I guess, well, actually, if I'm looking at the middle schools, looks like they're on the rise across every school, right? So at the elementary level, we've got specific concerns at certain schools. Middle school, it looks like it's on the, on the rise everywhere, right? So maybe there needs to be a root cause analysis. Do we think sources of strength are really going to help with that? Or is that not necessarily directly aligned with, with these type of stats? So I, I just wanted to say thank you. I, I appreciate seeing the data. I appreciate seeing it at the, the breakdowns that, that you've provided. And I think the assurance that the school improvement teams each have this information and they will be building it into their, the SIP plans for the next couple of years, I think, is, is what I'm most glad to see.
And I think, just a couple of comments to, to the points you're making, Ms. Sevigny. Like in the middle schools, that upward trend, and this is one of the challenges, sometimes that upward trend is because we're trying to focus and, and address it. And that's kind of that catch 22, because as we have students who are displaying disrespectful behaviors, and, and one of the migrations we noted, as we looked at the discipline data, is the elementary moves from the physical and then the middle school level moves into the disrespect. So, you know, the middle school spiked, but when you go a little bit deeper, it was in the disrespect category, it seemed to spike. So a lot of times, you know, as, as a former middle school principal, when, when you're trying as a school to say, we're really going to look into this specific issue, you know, you're, you're charging your staff with, let's address it. And when we address it, we're documenting it, right? So we have, you know, put sources of strength next year, all of our middle schools will have sources of strength in them. And, well, we already have sources of strength in them. That was kind of weird that I said that. The program will be put in place in all the schools. So I think, I think that certainly from a climate, culture perspective, and it's, it's one more piece, and that's a very student involved. And again, to the point of getting the students to be part of that, solving the problem and seeing how, here's a program that's going very well, and really builds culture and community, particularly, frankly, in light of what we started the board meeting with. I, I think, given those, the situation that, that we were addressing early on, I think it's really important that we're getting the student voice and, and putting programs in place that, that build that capacity for our students as well.
And I will say, Ms. Sevigny, when you mentioned schools in the elementary, as I said before, it only takes one or two students to, to change, change that, that number significantly. So, so I do know that, that, that does happen. Ms. Bataglia?
So I know Mr. Anderson and I have had several discussions regarding the diversity class that's offered in, in Arundel schools, in Arundel County schools. And I know there is data to support that when they've offered that in the high schools, they've noticed a level drop in fights and racial undertones and just nastiness altogether. Is there something along those lines to offer for middle school?
From a specific class perspective, I, I think we, we could certainly explore that. But I, I would also think that through the sources of strength program that we're, like, that's certainly an identified area when you, when you think about what SOS is built upon, you know, that programs and activities the students engage in, you know, there's a lot of, like mix it up days, just one example, something that's regularly done at the middle school level, when we have kids in schools and they can mix it, like get to know somebody else, walk in their shoes, those kind of examples. And I think when we have those student-led groups that are empowered to do that, it, it really does promote ownership by the kids. And, and so I think, I'm not aware of, of the courses you're speaking of specifically, but I think, you know, we, we're just starting to roll that out now in all of our schools.
Mr. Streaker, and I'll just go ahead and respond to that directly. So we have started that conversation. We've met with a number of content supervisors in regards, I think you're referring to the global citizenship course that was offered and shared at, at May. So we are exploring that, as you know. That is something that we'd have to develop and then go through you all for approval. But I think where you're going with it, it does, it creates an awareness of different cultures, what we've been talking about this evening. And really, in, in a more educational environment. And, and it really touches on multiple cultures and ethnicities and, and appreciation for one another.
Yeah, and opening the conversations. And I think that's one of the biggest things is, is some of these kids don't know how to sit and just talk to another student about how they're feeling, how something said makes them feel. And unfortunately, then it becomes this lashing out. And yes, sources of strength is an incredible program. I know a lot of it is like, kind of like invitationed, but it's, I haven't really, I mean, can any students sign up for sources of strength? Or is it?
I think the initial, the, the advisors, the students who actually are leading the group, I'm not sure, each school would probably put that in play. I'm, I'm not super familiar with the exact way that's rolled out. But my understanding is there's a group, a core group of student leaders that are representative of the student population as a whole. I know a lot of time and energy goes into selecting those students. So we have students that are, that really represent the whole student body. That's one of the, the power, one of the pieces of power of that program. It's, it's not student, like voted on, you know, there's different elements of different programs we have. So teachers identify, we try to identify a student who is a leader among a group, or maybe an untapped leader. And that group may be a non-traditional leader that, that we might identify to come in. And then having that student, so when we're rolling out the program, having that student's voice heard as the school was, you know, doing school-wide events, or even smaller, more targeted even by grade level or by team at the middle school level. Sometimes each team might do something. So...
Mr. Streaker also, Ms. Bataglia, Ms. President Herbert, gave us a directive to go and get that million-dollar grant. So we did that GEAR grant. And that GEAR grant's actually going to be, a significant number of dollars will be contributed to expanding sources of strength as well. But I can't agree more. We're very excited about the June, the June 21st work session, where we will be looking and revising our strategic plans. So we're going to have some suggestions for your consideration at that time.
Davanchi?
For the point about developing culture of diversity, as I've mentioned before, students who are subject to racist, sexist, homophobic, anti-LGBTQ remarks and actions, they're often afraid or unwilling to go to a school official or report it because, or like call them out because it leads to more uncomfortable situations for them, which is not good school climate-wise. And again, poses a issue like curriculum-wise as well with certain students in the classroom. So I know we're, we've talked that we still need to develop ideas for how we're going to combat that. But how, how have we been doing that up until now?
Combating how the individual students and here, I, I think what we're trying to do is, is create a culture within a school where students do feel comfortable and supported by their peers. And certainly, that's not foolproof, right? There are certainly times that fall short. Our school counselors, particularly at the middle school level, like elementary, there's a lot of like whole-class lessons that they go in and they're teaching students. Our health curriculum is aligned that way, too, where we're talking about diversity in different aspects. And, and particularly when, in the school counselor lens, and I, you could speak a little bit to health, but whenever we're, I will say, whenever we hit a sensitive topic, right, whenever, whenever health is exploring, I will say as a principal, when a health class is exploring, you know, abuse or trauma, we typically get a response of students seeking out their school counselors that way. And a lot of times, the school counselor will go in with them, or somebody from a community agency might come in and co-teach those. And again, our school counselors are going in presenting classes. So I would say that's how we're addressing it. It is certainly a challenge for students to find that voice, to find that strength, because, you know, there's a lot of pressure. And I think as adults, we face the same thing in a different way. You know, do you speak out against that? And do you weigh the pro and con? But as adults, I, you know, we've managed, we manage that over time. We need to teach our students the, the skill to, to find their voice and to know that they'll be heard and that we're going to listen and create a culture within that building that students can trust our adults, that we're going to follow through, and we're going to do our best that we can to diminish, to diminish that and make, make sure the student feels welcome.
And to add to that, I would just say that we continue to provide training to all of our school administrators so that they can create an environment where students feel safe to come and report what's going on. And so that, as you said, they don't take an action that makes the situation worse. So we have been working on that and will continue to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Bataglia?
I know definitely with the sources of strength, there was always the trusted adult. And I think making sure those that have been trained in the sources of strength and administration teachers, Board of Ed members, having some type of identification out, you know, whether it's a badge, whether it's a pin, whatever, those visualizations definitely do help students. I mean, that way, they know that there's someone right by them that is a trusted adult to help them out. And I think that's something we need to also make sure we're doing, too.
Ms. Sevigny?
And Mr. Anderson, you had, you had mentioned the strategic plan session update that we're going to have in a couple of weeks. I just wanted to, to understand, you know, as a tie to the, the school improvement plans, right, like these are the, these are the stats that we're currently keeping an eye on to keep ourselves accountable and as part of the strategic plan. But you know, you look through some of this data and you say, okay, oh, something's going on at Manchester Elementary and, and Moten and Runnymede. And then, you know, when you look at the middle schools, you say, okay, well, it's kind of, it looks widespread, right? It's happening everywhere. But then if you look at the high school, you say, oh, well, there was a huge spike at, at Manchester Valley this past year, and also a huge spike at Winters Mill, right? Like, so what, what specifically do we think was driving some of those things? And are, are the school improvement plans, like are the schools, I know they're seeing this data, but are they, are we asking them to align it to, you know, making that it's included in their, in their, in their SIP plan for the coming year, so that it impacts the strategic plan?
You had mentioned earlier, root cause analysis. And, and that's what our directors do with, with their principals and their teachers and their school improvement plans. And quite honestly, the, the illustration is, is fairly simple. The illustration is we look at system data. And then each school actually works and looks at the plans and those focus areas of your strategic plan and writes the goals based on that. And that's how we, in the aggregate, as a school system, get better. Period. And so that is the process. And our school directors do an excellent job of facilitating that under Cindy's leadership. But I want to go back one last piece, which you're talking about conversation. There's work going on right now, as Dr. Dorsey knows, with our equity department and curriculum department on how to have those conversations in classrooms now. It's, it's hard work. We have to teach kids how to be civil. And also, Davanchi, to your point, Mr. Streak and I have already had extensive conversation about developing a perceptual survey to get to the insights that are necessary that kids walk around with that we don't know. And so in order to do that, we have to ask them anonymously, you know, important questions that will then drive our schools also and how to create the culture, as we've heard several times tonight, culture, eat strategy for breakfast. You know, we have to create the safe environment, safe environment's the number one indicator to student success. So that's what we have to create in Carroll County Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Streaker.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Oh, Dr. Dorsey?
Well, I was just going to add, you know, Ms. Sevigny, I, what you're getting at is like the school improvement teams and looking at their data. And I think, you know, some of the rich conversations are held at the school improvement team levels. You know, they look at the data and then they sort of question, why is this data looking like this? You know, what's going on? What are some contributing factors? So, you know, those are our rich conversations. And again, that sort of leads then to saying, okay, now what do we need to target? What do we need to do, you know, to, to make this better? Yeah, so I had looked at, you know, the, the high school information as well, and I noticed those high bars, you know, with the, the race piece of it. And again, you know, and again, at the middle school levels as well. But, you know, we look at the data and the numbers, so to speak. And again, we have to know that, you know, we are entrusting our school staffs to question why their data is looking as it looks and then to come up with some action plans for how to, to make the situation better.
Yeah, our SIP teams are very important.
And this data is in aggregate. I want, as we speak of individual schools, I think it's important that I, that I share, this is aggregate data. So when an individual school has a higher bar than others, and certainly the data reflects that, that could be, like Ms. Herbert, you, you mentioned, it could be an individual student that we're working really hard to create a plan for and design and measure. So, so I think it's important for us to make sure that, as we're looking at this, that individual schools are taking that and, and looking at that student and then looking at the aggregate. How many, how many of these students have one or two referrals? Like if one referral in that category, that means they, they exhibited inappropriate behavior and they corrected it. Like, that's a celebration to us. We prefer that it doesn't happen at all, but if it happens once. So that level of detail is happening at the school level. So I, I do think when we look at the whole picture, we have to be careful, because we definitely have schools that, that spike and, and go up and down. And sometimes that's two or three individual students who are very needy students, who have specific individualized plans in place. And the discipline can at times be something we're tracking with that student as we're developing behavior intervention plans and other supports for the students. So I certainly want to make sure that, that I say that out loud, so that anybody looking at the data and says, look at my school, it, it can be just a few students that we're working very closely with that student and their family.
Well said. And that is so true.
Yeah, thank you, Carl. Appreciate all your work there.
All right. Now we will move on to the construction report. Dr. Lockhart?
Hey, this is the monthly construction report. The two biggest updates are the projects at Winfield Elementary. They appear later on the agenda for award of bids. And staff is certainly prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody? Ms. Sevigny?
I just wanted to ask if the Career and Tech Center improvements, I know we, we see a list of, of what's going on, just making sure everything's on schedule, that there aren't any issues that we need to be aware of. And then also, just an update on the, the East Middle. East Middle School project and where that stands as well.
Well, everything, we're on schedule with the Career Tech. We're on schedule for each of the, on each of the phases that you, that you're aware of. So there's really nothing, no issues to, to report with Career and Tech. With, with East, we're going to be receiving bids in a matter of weeks, I think on the 25th. That'll start the process of evaluating those. It'll take us four to six weeks to completely evaluate all those bids, and it's going to be a, that'll tell the tale about where we are with our, with our budget estimates and the, the current construction climate out there, which is red hot right now.
Right, I guess that was one of our concerns, right? Construction costs are dramatically on the rise, and we want to try to lock in the, the funding for, for East Middle, right at the state level.
So where we sit right now at the state level, Mrs. Sevigny, is we're, we're trying to work with the members of the, or the Director of the IAC, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, other state officials. And our goal is now that House Bill 1 is law, to try to get them to define for us. We're one of the 17 counties who do not have a specified funding amount in, in ink in the law, so we're trying to do all we can to, to get that number, that commitment from the state, and hopefully we can, hopefully we can get that by the time Mr. Prokop and Mr. Hartlove's team pulled in the, the bid results and we bring that award to you. And we'll keep you apprised of that as we get closer.
Dr. Dorsey.
And it seems like Robert Moten just continues to have situations with, with getting this parking lot improvement taken care of. So again, we've submitted a response to the comments that we've received from the county, and it looks like we're still on, on target at this time to perform the work this summer. But were there like major kinds of things that, that had to be responded to, or are we hopeful that, well, I guess we are hopeful since it looks like you're still planning to perform the work this summer, but you still have to get approval on what was resubmitted, right?
That's right. We're forever hopeful. That's the way it is in construction.
Like a wonderful title to something, forever hopeful.
That's been a struggle. We, you know, we're, we're in touch with, with folks at the county continuously to try to get over the hurdles involved there. And we're still, we're still working closely, we're still struggling a bit, but again, we're, we're looking forward to being able to start for the summer.
Any other questions? Dr. Lockhart?
If there are no other questions.
Okay, all right. Let's move on then to the COVID-19 fiscal report, please.
Thank you. So this is the monthly COVID-19 fiscal report, impact report, provided by Mr. Hartlove. It details the expenditures tied directly to the pandemic. The two largest updates this month relate to the contract for nurse services and the devices for students' grades through and to middle school. And Mr. Hartlove is with us.
And I really do like that new area where it says change. I like that a lot. Thank you so much for that, because it just jumps right out at you. Ms. Sevigny?
I, I did want to thank you, Mr. Hartlove, because I actually had it on my list of things to ask for tonight was can we start showing a comparison to the prior month? Because every month I was going back and pulling out the, pulling out last month, so thank you very much for that. And just wanted to ask a, a specific question about the computer devices. It looks like we increased that expenditure by 2.5 million, and is that, that's for all middle schoolers to get a device?
Yes, that's, that is, that's for middle schoolers.
Okay. And that would be one-to-one for, for middle schoolers?
Correct.
Okay, so there would still be an additional piece of this, because at one point we had said that we were probably going to also get one-to-one for fourth and fifth graders?
I believe down through third grade is my understanding, yes.
Okay, so this category isn't quite complete yet.
No, it's not, not at this point, but we, we were planning for that next year.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And could, could you explain, there, there was a $76,000 increase in the air purifiers piece? Was that like additional air purifiers that we were getting to kind of?
Yes, we've had a couple of iterations. We had the, the first major award that, that we brought to you initially that focused largely on classrooms or instructional, student instructional spaces, mostly classrooms. After we, we did that first deployment, we went back to fill in any of those gaps. One of the places where we had to kind of adjust for were relocatable classrooms or portable classrooms, so there was kind of a follow-up purchase for that. And then once we finished with the instructional spaces, we, we provided four units, I believe it was four units to every school. So there's a, another purchase on the award of bids this evening, I believe, Mr. Hartlove, to cover.
Correct.
Number nine on the award of bids.
So there's been a few, you know, there, there's that large initial purchase and then a couple of follow-ups just to round out all of the spaces in all the schools.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any other questions? All right, Dr. Lockhart, we are going to move on to academic recovery, compensatory, and extended school year service update.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and team are here for an update.
Good evening, board members. I just quickly wanted to give you an update on the next iteration of, of our, of our plan. A couple highlights to reference within the plan. There's a new section now found in regards to high school attendance policy. I want to thank Mr. King and our high school directors for working together, for creating a narrative that basically holds our students accountable for attending, attending summer recovery. And if they miss a certain number of days, then they could be then in jeopardy of not actually receiving credit recovery. So there is an accountability measure. The second piece I'd like to share with you is that working closely with Dwayne Williams and Curtis Pierce, we wanted to make sure that because our summer recovery program is, is so large and across our school system, it was essential that we started figuring out potential security concerns and making sure that we had regional deputies on, on, you know, available to us and within feeder areas. So that is also in your plan. As you continue to move through our food production site, as you know, all of our students will be receiving a grab-and-go breakfast as well as lunch. And Karen Sarno has actually also provided us with the food production site, so that's in there for your information. And then finally, I wanted to share with you that we are incorporating now the actual power standards that are going to be focused on at each grade level for ELA and mathematics. The reason why we did this, based on the requests from our school directors and principals, there will be some, at times, teachers teaching outside of their grade level or content, and we wanted to make sure that they are well-informed of what the expectations are. These power standards in many cases have been developed in collaboration, obviously with the state, but most importantly, they are based on our local data as well, and our content supervisors locally have created the focus areas for our teachers. Those focus areas, to the questions earlier in the year, are going to be driving our pre-assessment as well as our post-assessment, basically to show our effectiveness with instruction and, and most importantly, student learning. I also would like to share with you, I'm, I'm very, very happy to report this evening that we have 2,131 students signed up, general ed students signed up to take part in summer recovery. In addition to that, we have another 350 students that will be receiving extended school year services. In addition to that, we have began our eligibility process for compensatory services. And although we have taken a number of families and students through the eligibility process, we're very proud to share with you that here in Carroll County Public Schools, the number of students that are going to be deemed needing compensatory service and recovery service is not at the number that we originally had anticipated because we came back. We came back and, and teachers were able to meet with students. However, we still have 134 that have been deemed eligible for recovery services. So, board members, we're, we're pushing 3,000 students as of today. May 16th, our tech, our tech services has been working with us closely. On May 16th, at that time, we will then essentially shut down the, the enrollment that, the process that we've been putting in place. That does not mean that someone cannot get in. In fact, our high school students, there will be a significant number of high school students that will have to register for credit recovery after, essentially after second, after, after the spring semester. And that is because they will need recovery opportunities based on this spring's report card. So along with that, Mr. Kyler, you had often expressed your interest to me also about staffing. We're in an outstanding position there. I know President Herbert, you were, you wanted to make sure that we could get the most intimate instructional environment with the student-teacher ratio. We're going to be, we're not going to be three to one, but we're going to be, we're going to be probably in single digits, which is going to be the most powerful experience for our, for our students.
So that means we have several hundred teachers that have signed up.
If you want to know the actual numbers as of today, and thank you, directors, for, for keeping the dynamic document with us and Angie and your team, we have about 235 elementary teachers that are, that are ready and willing. We have about 51 instructional assistants. We have about 106 middle school teachers and about 30 instructional assistants. And at the high school level, as of today, we have about 43 teachers and a couple or a few instructional assistants. But in addition to middle school, at the middle school and high school, we have counselors. And, and we want to thank our counselors for being available to support our, our students. I will say that Carl and Nick, Mr. Streaker and Mr. Shakni are working closely to make certain that in the majority of our schools, that we have, we will have a nurse at every single school for the half-day. In some cases, we may have to look at the sites and bring some sites together if the students are going to be going full-day, just to make sure that we have a nurse in the building. However, the opportunity for the student will not be limited. We'll just have to become more creative based on the staffing that we have with our nurses.
This is, no, this is wonderful. And our students don't realize that they've got a great opportunity here to make up, to catch up what they've lost, this learning loss, so thank you. Dr. Lockhart, do you want to say something?
I was just going to say, I really appreciate the, the huge amount of work behind all this, how quickly you've put it together. I'm pleased to hear that we're getting more and more numbers here, that we have staff available, that that brings that ratio down. And it's a, I mean, it's just a yeoman's job of a lot, a lot of people collaborating to, to make it happen, so thank you.
Major team effort. And board members, we're starting to work on our extended learning opportunities for the fall, for the plan already, meeting with Ray and Mike in the next couple of weeks.
Ms. Sevigny?
I just wanted to say this is outstanding work. Can't thank you enough. This is really coming together quite beautifully. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work. And I did want to ask about the, the extended learning into the, into the fall, so it sounds like there's more to come on, on that in future meetings.
Yes, and, and the, the biggest lift, obviously, is going to be making certain that we have the appropriate space. We have, depending where we are with operations in, in our schools and use of facility and all of the other variables that are involved, having the appropriate space. Transportation, obviously, will play a huge role because when we're talking about equity and access, the, a large number of the students that are going to be continuing to need support and, and recovery efforts into the next year are going to also need transportation. And so that's something that is essential, and Mike Hartzey and his team are outstanding and they're a pleasure to work with, and they've already started giving me some insights on how we could make that happen.
Any, Ms. Sevigny?
And Mr. Anderson, this is a bit of a nit, but just from my own curiosity, under the standards that we have listed for, for ELA and math, there, there's these categories of like, you know, 119 blank, 23 red, 20 yellow. What, what is that?
Yeah, those are the, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, but that's what you're talking about specifically to our ELA elementary. Those are actual specific metrics right now, based on some pre-assessment information that we have. I can get you more clarity in regards to the actual numerics, but essentially that's what it is.
So that relates to the 43%? So I'm, I'm looking specifically on the, the first page of the, of this, I don't, I don't know exactly what page of the document it is.
Yeah, like you're using 45% meeting exceeding standards January of 20, of 2021. That's essentially, when we're looking at our current local assessments, that's where we're sitting right now. And that's just justifying the, the need of having those focus areas.
Okay.
So they weren't arbitrarily chosen by Ms. Dale. These are items that we felt like were going to be the most salient in regards to having a, a foundation to build upon for other types of skills. We couldn't, we can't teach the entire curriculum, so we have to teach the power standards, the ones that have, where we should put the largest investment.
And what is our target for, for that particular example, you know, 43% are meeting or exceeding standards?
Yeah, so I just, I've, I've just went through this data extensively, and, and for that particular target, I'm going to tell you that that's, that's in our strategic plan. And as far as the actual goal for that, for that time of year, I believe, Dr. Lockhart and I just had this, this conversation, but I believe we were on pace, except, doing exceptionally well considering our environment this year. And I know that our elementary school, Steve Wernick had mentioned that several times over, how pleased they were with our local assessment data, even though we are in a pandemic. So that, I'm going to say, and I will get you the specifics, but that's, that's on pace. We're in a good place. Do you agree?
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, and everyone that helped with that. Now we will move on to the 2021 legislative updates. Dr. Lockhart and I know Mr. Kyler and I have been attending all those legislative meetings. Wow.
The 2020 and 2021 legislative sessions were greatly impacted by the pandemic in terms of access or the ability to directly offer testimony on bills. However, we have continued to be involved, especially through our professional organizations and in working with other Maryland school systems, as you exemplified. Ms. Herbert and Mr. Kyler, very involved with MAAB Legislative Committee, as I am with PZAM. Despite the procedural limitations brought by the pandemic, significant legislative issues continue to unfold, and we wanted to provide this written report for you and the public. It details significant bills that passed with an impact on Carroll County Public Schools and provides a high-level list of next steps for our system.
Comments or questions? I know it was very active. There's a lot of money flying around, a lot of expectations. Ms. Sevigny?
Mr. O'Neil, I want to thank you for the, the summary. This was very helpful, made it very digestible. It's a lot of information that you kind of boiled down into a very digestible format, so thank you for that. The, the one thing that I, there, there are a couple of things that I wanted to point out at the, the bottom of page one, just want to make sure that the commissioners are aware that it's important to note that Carroll County government has no funding requirement beyond its current plan for the implementation of any specific Kerwan requirement. I think that's just something, like we just need to keep pointing out and make, making sure that the, the commissioners understand, right?
I, I do believe that they do. We certainly, they have a legislative officer, Mr. Fowler, who, who's very active with Mako in Annapolis, and I know that Mike's been well aware. And I tried to stay in touch with Roberta Wyndham and Mike Fowler throughout the process as we learned information, as, as we had, you know, revised real-time information. And that, that communication is pretty solid every year and pretty strong, so I know that, that they are aware of that.
Okay, great. And I did just have one other quick question. There was something on, under House Bill 83. I didn't understand what the purpose of that was. That's the electric retractable room partitions?
There was a situation a, a few years ago now, I believe it was in a Virginia school. I'm almost certain that's true. And so this bill came up at least one prior session, maybe even two prior sessions. And unfortunately, a child not only was injured, but, but died in an accident involving an electric wall partition. So this wall historically, as anyone could see, had, you know, a track where you could divide this, this room into two sections with a retractable wall. And I don't know if this was electric, it precedes me, but some, some spaces do have where you sort of push the button and the, and the wall panels come out, move out electronically and then lock in place. And so this bill is, this bill is the General Assembly's attempt to, to try to prevent any accidents like that from happening anywhere in Maryland schools. And so it would require procedures and policies, procedures to be in place so that adults operating those retractable walls would, would make sure that the path is clear and that no student could possibly be in, in the way as the wall is closing and locking in place.
And I, I don't know if we have any, any in the high school gyms anymore. I know at North Carroll, they did, and the kids would like to hide behind on the other side when you're opening it up, and you'd have to be very, very careful. But I don't know, do we have these retractable walls in any of the schools now, high school gyms? I don't know. But I knew they were there to, you know, to divide your gyms up, so.
Right, at the elementary.
Now they have nets and all that, but I, I don't know, but they, I, I get how somebody could be killed there. They are dangerous.
I'm not sure that we do have any that would specifically fall under what, what the intent is here, but we will, Mr. Mr. Prokop and his folks, Mr. Andrews, we will go out and, and just assess what we have, and for whatever it's worth, even if we don't have any that qualify, make sure that, that schools are aware to, to be mindful and to have some, some practices in place to help, help ensure safety. help ensure safety.
Davanti?
Well, just to comment specifically on the provision of menstrual hygiene products bill. I know that that is something that students, especially in high school, in our county, have been trying to get into our schools for a long time, advocating to school admin. So I am grateful that we have plans in motion to get that in our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Sivigney?
And, um, Mr. O'Neil, I did want to ask one question about the, the state model curriculum. So, I mean, they're going to be putting new standards and potential curriculum resources together, but we would still have local control over the, so the, the standards would be the standards, but the, the curriculum resources and, and the curriculum, the support materials that we develop are still under local control, correct?
That would be my understanding, but I'll defer to my colleagues.
Yeah. So, yeah, can you give me a further expla, or question, like, more in depth? I want to make sure I'm answering you correctly.
Oh, no, I just want to make sure that, you know, like, through Comar or anything, that they're not saying, like, you have to, your, your curriculum has to, you know, use these texts or these references.
Oh, no.
Or, like, we still have local control over, like, as long as we meet the standards, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and as you know, in the aggregate, we do very well. And we develop our own curriculum. We have been getting lots of questions, as you can imagine. And it feels very good to respond to our community and, and share that not only do we develop our own curriculum, we identify our own appropriate resources to support that curriculum. One of the areas where we need to really focus is making sure that we are educating and building the capacity of our teachers to make the best decision in regards to identifying a ancillary resource that they may deem appropriate through academic freedom. They are the practitioner. And so that's where we're at right now. And I know Dr. Lockard has some plans for us in the future on how we can address some of that.
Any, anyone else? Mr. Kyler?
You had to piggyback on that, and Dr. Lockard had mentioned, I don't know, a week or so ago, evidently, some of the counties aren't as open to parents coming in and asking those questions. You, you might live in one of those counties right now. And, and I've told, I, I, yeah, maybe your house isn't there anymore, it used to be. But, um, you know, I've told a bunch of people, I, I get, it seems like I go to any meeting, that's one of the questions I get, why can't we see the curriculum? I said, you can. Send an email, call in there, ask. I said, they'll set you up and see it. And if three of you want to come, two of you want to, you know, they can do it.
So thank you for saying that. One of the things that we-
And they're almost surprised by it because they aren't getting that response some, in some of the other places.
So we've worked, since, since I assumed this role two years ago, we've worked really, really hard, Ms. McCoslin and her team, to be as transparent as possible. And I think in some ways, that's kind of been like, well, what are they doing? We're being transparent as possible. We had heard feedback when, when we arrived here that families couldn't find the curriculum. So we've been as transparent as possible, providing the curriculum. And I think right now, you know, it's just because of current topics in our, in society today, we're going to get the questions, we want to get the questions. Ms. Herbert sent me a question 30 minutes before this meeting, and it was a pleasure to respond to that individual because I feel very confident about what we're doing. And we're going to continue to be as transparent as possible.
And example was, I had a parent email me and ask me curriculum question. Well, we see texts, but we don't see all the curriculum. And that's another reason why we want to do have a work session. But I, that's not for me to answer. And, and I, it was great, and I did not see a reply because we've been here. But it was very thorough, and they want to know answers. And there's nothing, that, we need to do that. So, and we need to do it, you know, in a timely fashion. And, and everybody that I've asked had a question or it was sent it somewhere, it has been done in a timely fashion. And that's what makes our public school great. So we are open and we're on it. So, any other comments about legislative update? All right. Now we will move on to our action items. I need a motion for the approval of the appointments, 8A. So moved by Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, President Herbert. Board members, I'm excited and pleased to be able to bring appointments for your approval this evening. First, I'll start, we will have, be having a vacancy with our Director of Human Resources. We are sad to see Shantris Baptist leave us for Harford County and, and another opportunity there. And wanted to take this moment to thank her for her dedication and outstanding work in Carroll County Public Schools. She will be greatly missed and wish her nothing but the best on her next endeavor. With that, we have a vacancy then, that we're going to be filling. And I'm very excited this evening to recommend Ernesto Diaz as the next Director of Human Resources for Carroll County Public Schools. Ernesto has served in a variety of roles in neighboring Howard County, almost a decade in human resources there, also experienced as an elementary principal, a middle school principal, a elementary and middle school teacher, also does work as an adjunct professor at Towson University. Man who comes highly recommended, and we're very pleased to have him in the role supporting Carroll County Public Schools as Director of Human Resources. Ernesto is here this evening. I wanted you to be able to meet Ernesto, and we're excited to make that recommendation. I'll continue with the rest of the recommendations on this agenda item. Next, recommending Melissa Lombardini. Melissa is a special education teacher at Spring Garden Elementary. We're recommending her as Assistant Principal at Winfield Elementary School. Next, we're recommending Heather Simies. She's currently the Assistant Principal at Mann Valley. We're recommending her to pupil personnel worker in Student Services. As a back note to that, we are going to be moving Lois Tiffany, who's currently an Assistant Principal at South Carroll, to the vacancy that's now at Man, Manchester Valley, in the AP role there. And we will then fill Lois's vacant Assistant Principal position at South Carroll. And finally, we recommend Carolyn Thomas. She is currently an Assistant Principal at Robert Moten. We're recommending her as Principal at Mechanicsville Elementary to fill the vacancy there created by Glenn Nishir transferring to Linton Springs. Those are the recommendations I have for your consideration this evening.
First of all, I would like to thank Shantris also. Anybody that was in Human Resources this year at the Board of Education here, it was not easy. We put, we put that whole group to the task of filling vacancies during this COVID. And I really want to thank her for leading the pack to do a great job. Heather, congratulations. I am sorry to see you. I see you about every other week at my barn, your daughter rides there. But I know that is your calling, and you belong there. But I will tell you, having the Vice Principal from South Carroll move right in there, I know she will do an excellent job. She did an excellent job down at South Carroll, and I know she will continue to do a really great job at Mann Valley. And she will be a really great asset. And she does have a lot of experience. So, and I understand, they, they need to move to get the experience to be principal. But that, I think Tiffany Lois will be a wonderful asset there to Mann Valley. Dr. Lockard, anybody else?
I just wanted to take a quick second to thank Shantris as well. And the, it, it really was just an incredible team effort this year, and, you know, against all odds, made it work. And, and I know that, like, her leadership with that team was instrumental. So thank you, Shantris, for everything that you did this year.
Dr. Dorsey? Do you want to say something?
My, my thanks and congratulations as well to Shantris. And I know she's, um, you know, really made a mark as far as a, a number of different settings here at Central Office, um, with her involvement with the, the equity folks and, and working with them to in, and increase our minority population as far as the staff is concerned. And so again, just thanks for all you've done for us, and we wish you, we wish you well in your new assignment.
And Mr. Diaz, welcome. We're a tough bunch. We led the state and we're not stopping. So I'm just telling you to hold on because we're movers and shakers, and we're proud of it. So welcome to Carroll County.
Welcome.
Yes. All right. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Action Items. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Diaz, for joining us this evening.
Hold on a second. So moved.
Yes, so moved, yes. All right, I'm sorry. Yeah, we were moving on, yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Yes, thank you.
We got it.
Okay. We have only one new hire on the monthly Personnel Action Item. It is listed in the agenda packet.
Comments? Questions? All right. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the Award of Bids.
So moved.
Uh, Ms. Sivigney and seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard?
Okay. Board members, there are 15 items on the Award of Bids. If I could, I will, and that's not necessarily uncommon for this time of the year particularly, as we begin closing out one fiscal year and look to the next. So not out of the ordinary. If I could, I'd like to give you a highlight of each one, and then, Ms. Herbert, we can certainly go through whatever questions board members have. Good?
Sounds fine.
Okay. First up is the Winfield HVAC Project. This award allows us to move forward with Winfield's HVAC project, coordinate with the roof replacement project, and finish the work at the school this summer to be out of the way for the student's return. We have performed due diligence to identify the most cost-effective competitive bid and bring you this award to Phillips Way in the amount of $3,995,000 to complete the project. We have worked with Phillips Way in the past and are confident in their service. Item number two is the Winfield Roof Replacement Project. As just mentioned, this project will be coordinated with the completion of the HVAC project. Again, after due diligence in the bidding process, we are bringing you an award of $1,851,000 to the lowest responsive bidder, Coal Roofing. As with the HVAC award, we have worked with Coal Roofing in the past and are confident in their ability to coordinate with the HVAC project. Number three, item number three is Commissioning Services for the East Middle Project. As you're aware from past projects, we tend to use commissioning services on large capital projects for the past at least 15 years. This is an integrated service to ensure thorough documented verification that all building systems perform to the design specifications. Essentially, this service ensures that all equipment and systems in the project are procured, installed, and operate as intended in the design. This is vital in eventually closing out the project and us being granted occupancy. Number four is Asphalt Replacement at Linton Springs. We reckon, recommend an award to CJ Miller for this project. The pavement at Linton Springs has been identified as a priority through our ongoing capital review process. Item number five, refinishing the gym floors at FSK and Oklahoma Road Middle. Each summer, we work on projects like these as needed to be ready for the next school year. These two gym floor refinishes are funded through our State Aging Schools allocation. PA system replacements at Mechanicsville, Oklahoma Road, Winfield, and Friendship Valley, these systems are all, they, they all experience technical issues and require constant repairs. And if anybody works in the school knows, a PA system is imperative. So the replacement systems are also funded with Aging Schools money. Printing of informational calendars is number seven for the 21-22 school year. The Award of Bid for the Annual Printing of School Calendars. Each year, we provide one copy to each household. As a reminder, a couple of years ago, we successfully combined the informational calendar and the student handbook into one document, which resulted in annual cost savings. Item number eight is the three-year contract for refuse removal. This contract was bid with three-year renewals to lock in the best possible pricing for our annual refuse removal. Item number nine is an award for an additional purchase of air purifiers for schools. We referenced this earlier tonight. This was the second round of purifiers to provide schools with units to use in office areas and other non-classroom spaces after we first focused on all of our classroom instructional areas. Items 10 through 13, these five, these awards are all to replace aging vehicles or heavy equipment in plant maintenance. Where possible, the replaced vehicles will be placed on public auction. Collectively, there are three work vans, two dump trucks, two skid loaders, and one compact excavator. The budget office has reached the point in this fiscal year where we know we will have the year-end funds for these purchases. 14, item 14, Food Service Delivery Vans. This is an award for two additional vans for the food services program. As you know, over the years, we have moved to a model of more satellite and delivery. And with the pandemic, we have increased our community food program. The initial van from the prior year has proven to be a success, and we're eager to add to that service model. The two vans will be bought from the Food Services Fund. And finally, number 15, Audiovisual Equipment. This award is for buying, is a buying guide for audiovisual equipment for next year.
Comments or questions? Dr. Dorsey?
Could you say something about the air purifiers, Dr. Lockard? What number is that?
Oh, you didn't have that on there?
Yeah, that's, it's, it's a mist.
I didn't, I think I still remember seeing it.
Okay. I apologize. I don't know if that's-
That's okay.
-listed on the site or not. It should be.
It is on the public-facing website. It should be new, it, they, well, there's some renumbering issues here, I see now, but it should have been-
Right.
-renumbered as number nine on the public-facing document.
Okay.
It is a purchase in the amount of $101,520. And this, as Dr. Lockard said, was something we mentioned earlier this evening. After we finished up all of the instructional areas, this was to allow each school to have four additional units, two of the larger, this-sized unit that, that are in the classroom spaces, and then two smaller units to be used more in, you know, more like individual-sized office spaces. And they can move those about as they see fit within their office areas. So that's what that purchase is. And we anticipate that would most likely be it for the rest of this, of this year in terms of air purifiers.
And that comes from the state one-time funds?
It, it, it can. So Chris and his, and you can speak, Chris and his folks have done a most excellent job throughout this year of finding, finding the best one-time source of, of money available to maximize the overall pockets or pools of one-time money. So it may be that, or it may be MIMO reimbursement, but whatever he can use that, that best serves that need and, and allow as much money to be available, that's what they've been doing throughout this pandemic on an almost weekly basis. So Chris is telling me this is from, from the one-time money, though.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Sivigney?
So, so that item is, and, so it, I don't think we have a printout of it, but that would be one of the items that we'd be approving as part of the Award of Bids tonight?
Yeah. It, that, as Mr. O'Neil was saying, it's, it's actually number nine on the one that's out on the public side. I think there was, I think this one was, was included in your packet before that was added.
Okay.
So it is, it's, it's, it's actually, it should be on the one that's in your packet as well.
This, this was added Thursday into Friday, so it's been available to the public since then. I'm, I'm, I guess the copy you have unfortunately didn't get, we didn't get updated to you, and I apologize for that. So it's, the only, the only-
We're not broken, it's okay.
Yeah. The only difference between the earlier version before Thursday, which I guess is what got into your physical packets, and the, and the last version, is that new item, number nine, the, the air purifiers. Everything else is the same. It just, everything would have been renumbered accordingly.
Okay. Well, Ms. Sivigney?
Can we go through and ask a couple of questions? Or should we just go in order, or, okay. So on one and two, I'm just glad to, to hear that, you know, after some stops and starts on the project, that it'll be done, we, we anticipate that it'll be done by the end of the summer, so that's great news. Um, the, the next question that I had was, so it's, the copy that I have, it's number 10 and 11. It might, sounds like it might be 11 and 12 on yours. But it's the two, the two dump truck items?
Yes.
Correct. They are 11 and 12, yeah.
Okay. And what, what is the difference between those two?[1740.71] It might, sounds like it might be 11 and 12 on yours. But it's the two, the two dump truck items?
Yes.
Correct. They are 11 and 12, yeah.
Okay. And what is, what is the difference between those two? Why would, I mean, it looks like it's the same exact item.
One's a Ford Super Duty F-350, the other one's a Chevy Silverado. And we, we, our operations and maintenance folks, they spec out specifically what they need, and then we go out and find specifically what will meet those needs. So there must have been some differences in what they specked out between the two vehicles.
Okay, so some slight differences that you need to go with two, two different makes and models to, to make that happen?
Correct.
And, and Mr. Hartlove, I appreciate your adding on here since I ask the question every time, like, is this a net zero to the fleet? So I appreciate you including that information.
Actually, the folks that wrote it up, they did it without even, without us even asking, because I think they were getting used to me asking that question. So now they're just including it in the description.
Right.
To that, to that point, Ms. Savigny, the only item that is an addition is, on yours, it's probably item 13. On the new one, it's, or the corrected one, it's 14. It's the compact excavator. That, that would be an additional piece of equipment. What, what Mr. Prokop, Mr. Andrews, and those folks have done over the years is just rent that equipment as needed several times a year. We, we had the funds in talking with Chris and his team, and we felt like we could avoid those rentals and actually get more use out of having that piece of equipment in our, in our inventory. So that's the only thing that's not a net of, of zero equipment. Everything else is.
So, is?
And the cargo van, but that's coming out of Food Services. That's an addition.
Correct, yeah. For, for the maintenance items, the, the only net, net positive is the, is the little backhoe.
And I know that we, we, our, our approach has been that we don't really have money built in to, to replace
Yes.
the, the fleet cars, and when we have money available and fund balance, we, we go ahead and replace them, and it's usually extremely old vehicles that are under constant repair, that we're having issues with. If, if we were in a perfect world, what is the number of miles or years that we're typically shooting for on these vehicles?
So the, these are mostly large maintenance vehicles, and, and that's a little bit different. That's, that tends to be condition and how much annual maintenance is required. If it's starting to cost more to keep it running than it would be to replace it, that's sort of Mr. Prokop standard there. For the fleet vehicles, the, the cars that, for instance, people, personnel workers have those, those things, but you're right, we bring them in the same way. There's, there's no budgeted line item for any of this. So we bring them, and it's also, frankly, it's compounded because over the prior decade, we tried to never replace unless we absolutely had to. So, so this is built up. So when we have some year-end money and can we replace, we try to bring what we absolutely must. Again, there's the maintenance standard, but in general, we try to look at once a vehicle gets over 100,000 miles, unless it's a vehicle where there's a ton of maintenance in advance of 100,000 miles, that, that's roughly our rule of thumb for looking at replacements of, of more of the staff vehicles.
Okay. Are, are there other ones that desperately need replacement, but we're not bringing them forward at this time, or?
If we could replace more, more regularly, we would. We, we know that that's not a place where we've been, and we understand that. We, we have, we have explored different possibilities, and, and we didn't really feel like any of those were feasible, at least right now. For instance, we were approached by a vendor, and I forgot who it was, but it's a vendor that's in place in other governments, governmental entities, and at least one other school system, where they would, basically, if we could budget it in an operation budget way, sort of a standard amount each year, then they could use our government purchasing power and just leverage kind of an ongoing renewal of vehicles. But we just, we liked the idea, and we know that others have done it. We just didn't think we were at a place, at least not right now, where we could commit to that, you know, that operation budget item. So I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's not that we don't think about this and try to explore different ways, but where we sit right now, and I hear the county government present the same thing to the commissioners when they go through their budgets, like, we're, we're both locked in a place where we don't have line items, so we try to cling to things until we can't, and then replace them when they get too costly to try to keep them on, keep them moving.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't feel like we were falling way behind. Like, you know, we're always
Not, not way behind. If, if I, I probably would have brought you four or five additional staff vehicles this year if, if I could have, but we know that, you know, we'll deal with that next year.
And I think it's of note with these, most of the ones you guys replace end up, they're not traded in, they're sold at auction, and that kind of tells you the condition.
Right.
Yes. It's, yes.
Any other comments? All right. So I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of right-of-entry agreement for Johnsville Road sidewalk project.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey and a second by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, the MOU for this project was approved back at your March 11th meeting. This is a standard right-of-entry request from the county to construct stormwater management facilities at two school properties related to their sidewalk project.
Comments? Questions? All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval to waive the CCPS 25 credit requirement for high school graduation.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia and seconded by
A second.
Ms. Savigny. Dr. Lockard.
Board members, just like we did last year, due to the pandemic, we're bringing you this item to waive the CCPS 25 credit graduation requirement for seniors only graduating this year would revert to the required 21 credits required by the state of Maryland. And Ms. McCabe and Mr. King are here if you have any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Savigny?
Ms. McCabe, do you know how many students this would impact?
It's about a handful at each school.
Okay, so, under 50?
Under 50.
Okay. And is, is the, the waiver, is it because of a lot of additional failures this year? Or is it not much different than it would have been in other years?
I think we saw a bit more this year, just as we did last year. And that was because of extenuating circumstances for our students who were just trying to catch up, keep up, do school virtually, trying to keep up with us as we went in-person, and they were trying to decide whether they wanted to be in-person or at home. It, it just created a lot of disjointed times for our students. And so while some did well with it, others struggled. And because some were not in school to get the extra support that we normally can provide in, in an in-school setting, we had some, some students who struggled.
Mr. Kyler?
And, and some of the students that struggled may have been juniors and sophomores. Do, do you see this as a, a concern for next year, too, maybe? Because some of the ninth, 10th, 11th graders didn't get what they should have? Or do you think you'll be able to catch up once you get them all back face-to-face?
My sense is that we will be able to catch up once we get everyone back face-to-face. So I don't think we will have as many next year.
Because we're also offering those opportunities throughout the school year next year for recovery as well.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of Special Education Staffing Plan 2021 through 2022.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia and seconded by Ms. Savigny. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, Comar requires that you approve an annual specific, I'm sorry, an annual special education staffing plan. The Maryland State Department of Education then reviews our plan. Changes in this year's plan generally relate to adjustments made to, to balance employee caseload with student service hours. Mr. Shagni is available for any questions you might have.
Ms. Savigny?
Mr. Shagni, you didn't think I wouldn't have any questions?
No, that's okay. That's what I'm here for.
No, I appreciate it. I, I did have a, a couple of questions as I went through the report, and was just trying to understand the differences from last year to this year. I know last year I had asked a question, there was a big jump in the number of instructional assistants, and that wasn't really a change in staffing. It was just a recognition of employees who had joined the case bargaining unit.
Correct.
And that, that was an increase of, I think it was over 300, but it was
About 375 staff members in that, in that group.
Okay. And what I was trying to understand was, this year, there also is another 30 FTE increase in that category? Because I think last year it was 553.8 in the plan, and then this year it's 583. And I'm thinking that that's in relationship to the additional IAs that we might have hired this year due to the pandemic, or?
I have those numbers as being identical in the instructional assistant group, but I can go back and take a closer look. But there's been no change in our total number of FTE positions for instructional assistants or student support assistants within that group from last year to this year.
Okay, okay. So maybe what happened was last year's report, it wasn't final?
That's always the case. When I give the number of student support assistants, that's always based off of an estimate. I typically won't know until the, we get later into the summer exactly the number of students that are eligible for that. It is always a little bit of a, of a moving target, target. So that very well could have, could be what it is.
Okay. I was trying to understand whether there were, you know, because we, we know that we did hire additional IAs this year, right, to, to help out with the
If, if anything, in special education, we've had more vacancies than ever before in that group of, of employees, because they have, they were, they shifted into other roles. And with not every student in the building, it gave us some flexibility. So if anything, we have, we have a significant number of vacancies there. But I anticipate that, that come the start of next school year, we'll be fully staffed.
Okay, okay.
And as always, if, if I don't need the position, I don't fill the position.
Okay, gotcha. And, and I did note that, you know, the, the number of teachers was identical. You know, we had the six that we had added, but that was last year. And so this year, it is the same. I did see that under related service providers, that looked like an increase of six?
Yes, our speech and language pathologists is where the change came from. So we have historically utilized a significant number of contractors where we pay on an hourly basis, which is very, very expensive for us to do so. But working with, with other, other directors, we were able last year to convert two contractor positions into what we call full-time equivalent or teacher positions. That came at a savings. We were able to do the same thing, we're planning to do the same thing for next year and convert those. So our, our number of contractors in last year's plan, I believe it was around 14. And we're looking at maybe even using as little as five contractors for next school year. So that's a significant decrease, and that does come at a savings.
Okay, that's good news.
Yes.
And then the, the last one I had was, when we were talking about the, the 80 current 10-month staff that we're converting to 11, that's 11-month, that would be an additional eight FTE?
It shouldn't be any change in FTE. It's, it's the same number of positions that we currently have. We're just going to make that, make 80 of our, of our teachers and related service providers 11-month. But it shouldn't be any change in FTE there.
Okay, so it's an increase in the cost because they would be
Correct.
Okay, an increase in the budget, but not an increase in the FTE?
I think we, we brought to the board, it was roughly 700 plus, 670, maybe 1,000, yeah, additional
That sounds familiar.
To make that conversion.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding how that fit into the picture. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Shagni.
Thank you. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of transfer of school bus contracts. So moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Thank you. From time to time, we do, our independent bus contractors, we bring you transfers of contracts from one to another. We usually go over those with our staff, then bring them to you for official approval. There is one transfer of school bus contract that's as listed in the agenda item.
Comments? Questions? All right. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need an approval, I need a motion for the approval of the FY '22 Operating Food Service Debt Service and Capital Improvement budgets.
We're tabling that one.
Although we're tabling that, that's right. My fault, my fault. Thank you. Yes, we did. And we will pass that. Now I need a motion for the approval of Transportation Services Reimbursement Formula, FY '22. I need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Tara and a second by Ms. Savigny. Dr. Lockard.
All right, board members, at this meeting each year, we typically bring for your approval the Transportation Services Reimbursement Formula. This is the formula that we use to pay our independent bus contractors for the coming school year. The components of the formula are detailed in the handout, and we're prepared to answer any questions. This formula, formula is also incorporated into the overall FY '22 operating budget that we've been working on and considering. Just a point of information, I did want to let you know that I asked staff to form a committee to meet with representative bus contractors to review the current formula and its components. We've made the changes to the formula in recent years, partly due to outcomes from prior legislative audits, and the timing seems appropriate, if not overdue, to review those, those details. The committee is chaired by Mr. O'Neill and includes a few members of Mr. Hardesty's team and six of our bus contractors. They'll conclude this summer and provide a final report at that time, which may contain recommendations for future revisions to the formula. If so, those revisions would be incorporated into our FY '23 budget development process. Lastly, I wanted to take a moment to recognize our bus contractors and their drivers and assistants for their efforts this past school year. They are independent contractors, and therefore, drivers and assistants are not our, our employees, but they are so vital to our success. We maintained our partnership and our contracts with them throughout the pandemic, and as always, they delivered. Literally, they delivered, our students. The pandemic was, pandemic was challenging for us, and it, and it was for their businesses as well, but they stayed with us, adjusted and adapted to our changes, and continued to meet our students' needs through these challenging times. They're also an instrumental element to our summer recovery work that you've heard about, and the contractors are committing to meeting our needs with that program as well. So this is just one more example of dedication that our community benefits from through these long-time relationships.
Comments? Questions? I will say I thank them also because we could not provide transportation to our, our children, and I know they are really struggling right now to get drivers. And I, I understand everyone is struggling, and the way the economy is and the way the government and their unemployment, people can stay home and, and unfortunately, and do, do okay. So if anybody out there is watching, we need drivers. And we have a training here, right in our building, that we will train you and to get your CDL. And we definitely, you know, we need to get our children to school safe, and we need to get them home safely, and I thank you. And the other thing is, Dr. Lockard, I'm really glad that they are all meeting and sitting down and reviewing this, because I personally am friends with some of these people. I don't know how they stay in business with what they're doing. And I know a lot of them are family businesses. They started out a long time ago being Carroll County farmers, and, and it just went along that during the morning and evening, they could drive and then farm in the, in the middle of the day. And we still have them driving buses now, but I am very concerned, and I, I know these buses are expensive, and I know when you get to the end of that 10, 11, 12-year contract, things don't last forever. You know, your washing machine doesn't last like it used to, and I, and it's very expensive. So I thank them, and I'm glad they're meeting, and hope we can get some really good information out of that also. So for next year, that we can really look at closely, and I appreciate all their work. Any other comments? All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right. Now we are up to discussion 9A, the Proposed 10-Year Educational Facilities Master Plan 2021 to 2030. Wow.
Yeah.
Probably won't be around.
How about that? Oh, oh, it's a discussion, so we don't need a motion. Each May, it seems like each May we bring a lot of things, but we also bring the discussion for the Proposed 10-Year EFMP. It then goes out for public comment, returns to you in June for action in order to be submitted to the state in July. The major revisions to the EFMP are noted on the cover sheet, and they're also highlighted in the document itself. I did want to note that the plan does reflect the new enrollment projections, which are based on the methodology we discussed with you at the January board meeting. Essentially, we incorporated in an assumption that at least half the student enrollment decline we experienced during the pandemic would be reversed. As we also discussed at multiple meetings this year, As we also discussed at multiple meetings this year, we intend to review official enrollments this fall and then take appropriate action on the Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee, which has been on hold due to the pandemic-specific enrollment changes that we've dealt with. So with that, staff are here for any questions that you might have on the Educational Facilities Master Plan.
I do want to really thank that cover page. That really helped out and the changes from last year. And I want to thank you all for doing that. Dr. Dorsey?
Well, I just have a question concerning the latest census. When would we get results of the 2020 census to be able to look at that data as far as the community analysis?
I don't, I'll have to get that answer for you. I don't have that, I don't have an answer for when we would get that.
Oh, okay.
So I'll have to bring that back.
Yeah, I just didn't know either when it would be available.
Ms. Sevigny?
I had a couple of questions about, you know, kind of the next projects that are up for discussion. I see that Willie, or William Winchester is up for the next modernization. But when you look at the FCI scores, Liberty High School is a lot worse than Willie. So just trying to understand how those are prioritized.
Well, the FCI score you see there is, was done system-wide. But the composite scores that we created for modernizations only took into account those buildings built before 1980. And we haven't gotten to those yet. So Liberty wasn't evaluated in the same way those other buildings were. So that's why we have that arrangement now, or that prioritization at this point. We had talked, I think it was last year, two years ago perhaps, even at this point, about moving into the 80s and evaluating those, and then prioritizing those buildings within the current buildings we've done, we've already done. And in the meantime, though, the state has moved forward with doing their own, creating an MDCI, Maryland Condition Index, in which they're in the process of doing right now in our buildings. And that is going to take into account both the physical and the functional aspects of the building, at least from a size standpoint. And so we're thinking what we want to do at this point is wait. Let's see what their condition index shows, see how it compares to what we're showing with our FCI, and also how it compares to what we've done from a functional and a physical standpoint, and decide, do we have to redo that? Or are they kind of doing some of that work for us? So we're going to wait for the results of that before we move forward with any additional evaluation. But the reason simply, we had done all the pre-1980 buildings, so Liberty didn't fall into it. But we certainly have noticed that condition. Now, if the HVAC system is done beforehand, before we look at it from a full modernization standpoint, that is going to move that number somewhat, change its condition index.
Okay, so thanks for that, Mr. Prokhor. Because actually, my next question was going to be, do we need to update the report on the physical and functional assessment? But it sounds like you're saying, let's wait and see what comes out of that state assessment.
Yes, we proposed to do this, as I said, a year and a half or so ago. I think we talked about it during one of our FCI presentations. And at that time, we were talking about considering doing that, and then the world fell apart. So we're, but we're going to take advantage that the state is, like I said, if they're going to expend the resources to do this assessment, we should take the time to look at it. And if it serves the function, we'll use that information.
Anything else?
Did we want to get an update on what's going on with the Freedom Redistricting Committee? Like what we're planning to do with that? Because based on these numbers, it looks like the only thing that we need to immediately address, there aren't any newer emerging concerns from these projections, other than Freedom and...
Some of the middle school, to continue to observe and such. But yes, Freedom area is the primary concern.
What I can remember is that we talked and we were going to wait till the enrollments for the fall. Am I correct, Dr. Lockard? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we were going to do. Remember that conversation?
That's true. And that is how this is written, or at least how we tried to write the recommendations on page, I think at the bottom of page 6-4 and at the top of 6-5, is to get to the fall, see what the verified enrollments are. And then there'd be lots of opportunities, even with the CIP, if you wanted to marry it up that way, to talk about what the board's pleasure would be at that time. And we have had outreach with the community down there. I've been contacted by the Citizens Advisory Council. I even attended one of their meetings. And I have, at least I did my best, I hope, to try to outline that time period for them as well.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that... So this, there weren't any new surprises coming out of this or any new concerns? But just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything that looked like in here that, okay, we need to maybe take a different tact with Freedom? Like, we still think that that's the best course of action?
Relatively speaking, the Facilities Master Plan is relatively unchanged. I mean, it's just because of the way we're addressing those larger projects, Career and Tech in East, you know, we're heading down the right path. So we're staying true to it.
Okay, and then there's one quick thing on the relocatables. Was that updated based on the moves that we're making?
No. No, we would, yeah, we would make those adjustments after it occurs. So we try not to do those things ahead of time because then we're reflecting something that could change in some way. So we'd rather wait until it's done.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions? All right, now we move on to the proposed list of courses for virtual programs.
Okay, board members. So as we discussed earlier when we were talking about the virtual programs, any virtual course being offered does need board approval. So we're presenting a menu of courses that will be added to our already-approved virtual course listings to support the program. These would come back to you in June for approval. And Ms. McCoslin is here. Should we have any questions about these?
Comments, questions? Ms. Sevigny?
Just a quick, couple of questions, Ms. McCoslin. So these are in addition to those that are already available?
Yes, that's correct.
And about how many are currently available? Do you have a feel for that?
He's trying to pull it up. So, I mean, what we're looking at here, really, if you look at the middle school courses to be added, they would fulfill COMAR requirements. So the middle school career exploration 1 and 2 would fulfill FACS requirements, which are required by COMAR. The Exploring Informational Technology would fulfill tech ed, as well as the computational learning requirement under ESSA. The Exploring Music would fulfill fine arts, as well as the 2D studio art. And then the middle school fitness would fulfill PE. There's really not a lot of offerings at the middle school level through Admentum or through the vendor that we've selected to fulfill those COMAR requirements. And pretty much the same is at the high school, courses to be added. The other courses for like English 9, 10, math, those kinds of things, they're already in our program of studies. And what's offered through the vendor would align to what we teach. Forty-eight is the number.
Forty-eight, okay. Thank you, Mr. Bracka.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And for the Community Advisory Council, the Community Advisory Council had its last meeting of the year on April 27. The council had a wonderful presentation from the Westminster Boys and Girls Club and discussed possible topics for next year, including what our school system will look like next year after COVID, school system partnership with community groups and agencies, new techniques in teaching, mental health resources available to parents, and curriculum. The council would welcome the opportunity to study or provide feedback on topics assigned by the board. So, and you know they're always looking for recommendations from the board. All right.
I'm sorry, Ms. Herbert, did you say when their next meeting is?
That was...
That was, this was the last one?
Yes, that was their last one for the year.
Okay, so we should probably make it a specific point, like over our meetings over the summer?
We need to pick out a few topics.
We need to really focus on some specific topics we want them to address.
Sure. So I think we should get graduations over, and then we can talk about that because we do ask for that, you know, for them to do that. Dr. Lockard, did you want to say something?
Nope.
Okay. Unfinished, I just saw him, I thought I saw him headed for that button. Okay, unfinished business. 5:00 PM, Wednesday, June 9, the board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. And there has been a change. Monday, June 21, we will have the Strategic Plan Work Session in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. That was supposed to be June the 14th, but we have changed that to June 21. Ms. Sevigny?
Just one item under unfinished business. We had talked earlier about, so we had the motion of the no masks required outside. And that would be effective immediately, with the exception of the stadium situation, which would be Saturday. So you had said that that communication will... So for parents who were watching tonight, it's already out. Okay, and so parents know that it should not, their child should not be required to wear it at recess tomorrow? Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And, Dr. Dorsey?
We've had a lot of discussion tonight, and we've heard a lot of feedback concerning equity. We've talked about, yes, we need to move forward and do something, have an action plan that, you know, really outlines our targets, how we're going to be moving forward. So, Dr. Lockard, I was wondering if we can either have a work session or, you know, some type of time together so that we can say that, you know, that we're moving forward, that we're doing something? I mean, we're listening, but beyond listening, what are we doing?
Yeah, I plan to bring back information to share with the board about next steps.
In June?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd be happy to bring information back in June. I don't know that I'll have a full action plan developed for you by June. We obviously want to get the team together, start reaching out and putting that together. But, you know, it's going to, obviously, we're doing a ton of work right now. And I said earlier, we really need to double our efforts there. So I really want to take a comprehensive look at what is in place, what is working, what we need to do more of. Certainly, our student voice is critical to that. So we want to make sure we have that as a component as well. So we will begin to bring that to you. I just didn't want to promise you a plan by June, Dr. Dorsey.
Yes, I know there's a lot going on. Again, I just don't want us to lose sight of this.
Absolutely not.
Move.
Mr. Kyler?
Everyone should have gotten their list of the final graduation and certificate ceremony signups.
Yes.
And I assume everybody's comfortable with what they've got. And if a conflict comes up, because we're limited to one...
Right.
If a conflict comes up, we just need to email each other and make sure we get somebody there.
Correct. Anything else? Dr. Lockard, thank you for your leadership through these tough times. And we will get through it. And Carroll County Public Schools will be better for that leadership, and I appreciate it. And we will go forward. And we have got to take steps to correct this, so. All right, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. And thank you all very much for coming.